Welcome, everyone, to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, September 22nd, 2021, 8:30 a.m. At this time, we'll ask the invocation by Lead Pastor Sam Rainier, West Bradenton Baptist Church. Thank you for being here. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for a beautiful morning, and we thank you for your common grace, a grace that we can all experience together. God, I ask that, under your common grace, that you protect those who are serving today, our police officers. Lord, that you give wisdom to our teachers. And, Lord, that you guide our city council. Lord, I thank you for all the aspects of government that keep our city running. And so, God, I just lift everyone up to you that is working today within our city. Lord, I pray that we will reflect your goodness, and that this goodness will be seen in our community. And it's in your Son's name, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start out with Mr. Perry. You had a comment you wanted to make?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just an announcement as it relates to Resolution 2165, that the city administration will be withdrawing that particular piece of legislation.
So if there's anyone in the audience that wanted to speak to 2165, seeing none, we'll move forward. All right, Mrs. Melton?
We have a presentation by the Bradenton Police Department this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is always a great day for not only the Bradenton Police Department, but the city, as well as a lot of our community partners. As you know, we have a program associated with our forfeiture grants where we, by law, have to give back 25% of proceeds derived from the ill gains of drug dealers, felons, what have you. Typically, and this year is no different, we go far beyond that because we have so many worthwhile community organizations in our area that, as you know, in these times, I'll say, can use an extra help. We went through a process. We had numerous applicants. This group that's going to be getting up are the ones who bubbled to the top, and we feel that all of their initiatives were worthwhile. And so, today is Check Presentation Day. We're going to do it a little quicker than we normally do. I'm going to bring up Assistant Chief Kramer. He's going to run through quickly what they got, why they got it. As he's doing that, the groups are going to come up. I'm going to allow them to speak just a few words, about 30 seconds, and then we're going to take pictures following the presentation out in the hallway. And so, again, we wound up giving out this year over $18,000. And I think you'll agree, when you see the list of folks, that they're all very deserving. So.
The first one up is the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning.
Good morning.
With Dawn Stanhope of the Boys and Girls Club, Manse County, please come. We are awarding their organization $1,200 today to be used to build upon the success of the program between the Bradenton Police Department, the Rogers Garden Club, and the newly-added club at Manatee Elementary, to jointly identify and implement community improvement projects. Officers will be working with Junior Torch Club members, a leadership program within the Boys and Girls Clubs, focused on community improvement. Dawn, can you please tell us how the grant money will be used?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for this opportunity. We're so excited to be able to expand our partnership with the Bradenton Police Department this year and add Manatee Elementary to the mix. That is a community partnership school, which has a lot of great energy with people from the community coming together. And really, the benefit of this program is that the kids are rewarded for good behavior, for academic success, and learning leadership skills by working in conjunction with the police department on community service projects together. So it's not about giving, it's about getting and working together on that experience to provide back to others. So we're really thrilled to have that opportunity, and we couldn't do it without you. So thanks so much for your support.
Absolutely. I lied, I can't hang a check up.
Picture. All right, I've obviously got to say one comment to this one, so.
Anybody you want to comment on?
Anybody can do it. But on this one, as a lifelong Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club now, involvement member and all that, back in the day, I was the president of the Torch Club, before I became the president of the Keystone Club, and then so on and so on. So those are the leadership skills that hopefully will help a young person maybe be sitting up here one day. So that's a great, great organization. Obviously, if you read anything about me or know anything about me, you know the Boys and Girls Club is in my heart and will always be. So, thank you.
$2,000 will be awarded to Drug-Free Manatee. If Linda Thompson could please join me at the podium. Drug-Free Manatee provides solutions that make a long-lasting difference. This grant will fund a campaign to educate the community on the importance of access to Narcan and available treatment options. Funding will provide information on treatment resources available in the area to these high-risk neighborhoods. Linda, can you tell us more about Drug-Free Manatee, please?
Yes, absolutely. First thing I have to say is the support of law enforcement in the city is so important to our mission. There are a lot of people that don't want us to be successful, and those are the people that law enforcement have to deal with on a regular basis. And so, I think it's great karma that the money that comes from those individuals is now being shared with us so that we can stop what's going on. This money will be used to help provide for EMS, to be able to not only have Narcan kits to leave behind for families, but also information about resources, where to go in recovery, where to go get treatment, and also other resources that the families have. I'm a systemic psychologist, and I believe that everything is connected. And even though we are focusing this money on making Narcan available in our high-risk, high-use, high-need neighborhoods, we are also focusing in on the children that are impacted by their parents' behavior. So we're very excited about this. We hope to reach at least 500 different families during the course of the use of these funds. And we hope that by doing this, we can impact the horrible effect currently that fentanyl is having in our community and addicting individuals so quickly and so dramatically, and save some lives. Thank you.
Any questions? Linda, I just want to say thank you, and I know you and I have met a few times, and what you do for the community. And as everything changes, you know, there's a lot of changes, and it impacts every family. So thank you for what you do and continue to do to help our families and our communities. So thank you.
The Humane Society of Manse County will be awarded $2,500. Will Rick Yocum please come up? When cruelty and neglect charges are being investigated, the Humane Society provides a safe haven, routine care, medical assessment, and care for animals removed from homes by our agency. Cruelty exams are done by staff veterinarians, and reports are forwarded to Bradenton Police Department for use in court. Rick, would you tell anybody, everyone, more about the Humane Society? And we probably don't need the microphone.
Actually, thank you. Council members and Mayor Brown, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Chief Bevan, we so much appreciate your support. And I'm going to turn around because I also appreciate the support of everyone in the back of the room. The relationship that we have with the City of Bradenton Police Department is incredible, not only to benefit the animals, but to benefit our staff and our clients as well. And I am so appreciative, heartfelt thank you. How a society treats their animals is how a society treats the world. I mean, it is. And this city and this police department are incredible supporters of what we do. By getting this, it actually started a fund where members of the public now actually donate to the Humane Society to help treat these animals who have suffered cruelty and neglect. And it doesn't cover everything, but it certainly offsets what we spend on getting these animals rehabilitated and oftentimes getting them into a new adoptive home. So thank you to the city, Chief Bevan, and your department. You guys are incredible.
Absolutely. I'm going to say a few words on this one. You know, when I showed up here five years ago, I didn't have a vet. My canine folks quickly pointed me in the best direction possible, which was to the Humane Society. And I will tell you, on a personal note, the care and compassion that my family, my dogs, have received from this organization. Just last Wednesday, you were there with me when we had to put down our dog. If you all are in search of a vet, just the most incredible care, and it goes back to such a worthwhile cause, you know, I could speak over all these organizations, but just on a personal note, thank you guys for what you do. So, absolutely.
Would Drina Green of the Manse County Girls Club, Just for Girls, please come to the podium? Just for Girls provides before-and-after-school programs and alternative education for girls 5 to 17 who are living or attending school in Manse County. $2,500 will be awarded today to help the ABC program, which helps girls build a strong foundation of resilience, empathy, inclusion, and accountability to achieve long-term academic, personal, and professional success. Drina, can you tell us more about the program?
Good morning.
Morning.
Mayor Brown, Vice Mayor Barnaby, who is a JFG alum, the illustrious board, and everybody waiting around, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Chief Bevan and her staff for the financial support that they provide to us at Just for Girls. With their support, we're able to offer unparalleled opportunities and unlimited exposures year-round to those girls that are most needy, those that are most challenged, that don't necessarily start at the starting line. And so, when we do that, we're able to give them opportunities of hope, in short, help them reach their full potential through providing programs of academics, behavior, and character. So thank you again for your support, and we will continue to impact lives with your help.
Councilwoman Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the staff at Just for Girls. I want to thank the Bradenton Police Department for this award. This organization is very near and dear to my heart. If it wasn't for them, I would not have gone to college. So they teach leadership, they teach compassion, they teach empathy, and we need more of that in this world. And let me just also say, Ms. Drina Green, who was a very proud Lady Kane basketball player at Manatee High, and has come back and has met with the girls on the team and talked with them about the impact of women's athletics on leadership, and what you learn from that can follow you the rest of your life, and I want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would Charles and Shemika stand up for both employees of the city? Please join me here to receive $2,500 for your organization, the New Manatee Broncos. An estimated 90% of the children ages 4 to 14 are from low-income families who play football and are cheerleaders for this team. Their motto is "God, Family, and School," because it is about more than just sports. They use sports to keep the kids off the streets. Charles, can you tell us more about this important program? Shemika, if you'd like to speak up today.
I knew you was going to do that to me. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. For myself and the family of the New Manatee Broncos and chair program, we would like to say a big thank you. This grant will continue to help to keep our kids off the street. And to appreciate the partnership of Bradenton Police Department, Chief, we actually thank you very much for what you have done for us. The chief have come out and gave cookies to our organization, met with our kids, come out and participate. Matter of fact, we have challenged the chief and y'all on a four-by-one relay against our... So as the chief, we thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I think I just pulled my hamstring just now.
Thank you.
The Pace Center for Girls will be awarded $2,500 today. Kristi Haley, will you please join me? Pace provides girls and young women an opportunity for a better future through education, counseling, training, and advocacy. The girls are at high risk of abusing drugs and alcohol, and on average, live in poverty. The new Growth and Change System is a behavior modification program built on the Pace mission, values, and guiding principles. Kristi, can you tell us more about Pace?
Hi. Thank you all so much. We truly appreciate your support of our girls. Our girls, thank you. Our girls, thank you for this. And I have to give a little shout-out to Mayor Brown. He did judge our Best Dressed Ducks contest, which was an incredibly difficult decision to make, I know. They were really incredible entries this year. I want to talk a little bit about our Growth and Change. Our girls come to us mainly for school. That's how they find out about Pace. But we have to remember, our girls are all at least two years behind academically. So they've been skipping school, and it's really hard to come to school. It's not nearly as much fun as it is to skip school. So this Growth and Change program offers them incentives to come to school. It's all of these lovely little booklets they get. They come to us for the opportunity. That's their first chance. But we have to really praise them. The minute they come to school, we need to throw them a party and let them know how much we appreciate them, and let them meet small goals. And that's what this program does. We have to provide funding for incentives, our corner cottage to let them spend the points that they earn every day. And those small goals teach them how great it feels to reach a goal, and that gives them hope for their future. And that's really what this program does. We are hoping that they will grow and change their lives, and all of you here, especially Chief Bevan, we have really appreciated your help, and this is supporting our girls. So thank you so much from our girls and the staff, because we need the funding to help them. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you for letting me do that, and that was very challenging because there was a lot of businesses and people in our community that support Pace, and they all did a great job at that decoration.
They were pretty incredible, weren't they?
It was. It was hard.
Every year, they keep getting better and better.
And Mayor Bryant and I were glad that you had a lot of categories for awards. We were able to give out a bunch, and Ferkins did a great job in hosting that.
And anybody who adopted a duck, again, thank you so much. It was a huge success this year, biggest ever, 27,500 ducks raised. So thank you all so much.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Tim Frost is representing Replay Outreach today, who will be awarded $2,500 for the Successful Life Training Program, designated, I'm sorry, designed to encourage at-risk teens to uncover their unique purpose in life, learn to manage their behavior, and gain the skills necessary to be successful in the workplace. The end result is a roadmap to their future. Tim, can you tell us more about the Replay Outreach program?
You're welcome. Well, first of all, thank you for being here, and thank you to the Bradenton Police Department. I come from a family, I have an uncle who's a police officer, and your work doesn't go unnoticed. Quite possibly, some of these resources have come from some of the children that have come into our program. We work with young men who have offended, and they've gotten in trouble, and trying to give them some hope. As you guys see in this line of work, oftentimes, you run into a lot of hopeless kids. And a hopeless kid is a scary kid to run into because they have nothing to lose. So we try to get these young men to see who they are and try to give them a path and give them some direction. At the end of the day, it's their choice, and so we just thank you for these resources. And we just ask if you guys even want to come and build some relationships with these kids that you might have met in the streets. On this next level of replay, I think it would be good, just so they see you in a different light, that you really care for them. So thank you for these resources, and...
And lastly, the Bradenton Police Department Explorer Post 1004 will be awarded $2,500. Will Sergeant Perry Marrow and Sergeant Aaron Pylent please join us up here? The Explorer Post is designed for young adults aged 14 to 20 who have an interest in pursuing a law enforcement career. They learn many skills to carry them through life, including leadership, integrity, respect, problem-solving, crime prevention, and drug awareness prevention in both a classroom and real-world scenario. Which one of you finds, sergeants, will speak today?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, City Council. We'd like to thank you guys, but especially the chief and the administration for their continued support of this program. This program is designed to take young adults who are interested in a career in law enforcement, and we give them training in law enforcement, but not only law enforcement, for life skills that will help them be successful in life. This money will continue to provide equipment and training for these young people as we continue to grow. We have an exceptional group of young people in the program, and we hope to continue that going, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Kramer. I would be remiss if I didn't point out the person really responsible for hurting everybody, getting the notices out. This is a process. We follow direct, you know, specific rules. Lisa Reader, who has run this for the past three years, I think she did an exceptional job. Let's give everybody a hand. I don't think anybody could argue what a worthwhile group of folks we had up here. Thank you to council and the mayor. We appreciate you approving this.
Great job. Thank you. All right. Give everybody a second. That wants to leave can leave. All right, at this time, citizen comments will be accepted on non-agenda items. Comments will be accepted on public hearing or agenda items at the appropriate time. So first, you'll have three minutes to speak. The first on the non-agenda item is Gary Laco. Laco, okay. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yep, it's Gary Laco, 1230 50th Street East, Bradenton, Florida. And I'm going to start my timer.
I think you had given a brochure. Everybody has, you can give it in front of them.
Yes, hopefully one's got this with the two pictures on it.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank the Mayor Brown and the council for giving me the opportunity to talk today. I am discussing section ordinance 50-40, and in particular, section B, which I'll just read for everyone, even though you have it. It shall be unlawful to park, place, or locate any commercial vehicle larger than a 3/4-ton truck in any residential zoning district within the city except while loading and unloading such vehicle. And that's a good ordinance, okay? Because these are large vehicles. They obstruct the residential streets, which were not designed to have large vehicles parked on them. The problem is, though, it also means that any commercial truck of 3/4-ton or less can be parked on a residential street for an unlimited amount of time, days, weeks. And an unlimited number of those vehicles of 3/4-ton and less can be parked on those residential streets. And they were not designed for that. And so, the situation I've run into for almost the last two years is across the street, and you can see two pictures that are representative of the situation. These are all commercial vehicles, including that Ford F-350, and they constrict the street at that point. This is a 30 mile an hour speed zone. So every time I'm backing out of my driveway, you know, I have to be very careful from a side impact, from someone coming through this gradual turn. And so, I've worked with the HOA, I've worked with the police. Police cannot ticket vehicles that are 3/4-ton and less, even though they're commercial. HOA, it's a tricky business to work with them because there are plenty of people who work out of their home. And we have, you know, one of our deed restrictions is you can't have a business out of residence. But many people work at home. And so, defining who can do that and who can't, it takes the lawyer to get involved, and I'm working with them, but it's a very slow process. And so, I realized at some point, and I've also worked with code enforcement, but code enforcement can only work with vehicles that are on private property. Okay? So all these vehicles that are on the street, there's nothing they can do about them. And so, I really came to the conclusion, now we're going on almost two years, that it'd be very helpful if that ordinance could be changed to add at least one or two of those proposed changes that I list there. So commercial vehicles of 3/4-ton or less can be parked on residential streets for up to eight hours per day. I mean, people have a business, they want to install an AC unit at some home, whatever, that obviously is allowed. And then the second one, commercial vehicles of 3/4-ton or less cannot be stored on residential streets. And that is what the owner of this business has basically been doing for almost the last two years. And so, that is something I'd like you both to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them now. I've also left you my email address at the top of that sheet if you want to contact me later.
What we'll do, I think probably would be best is probably is to get with the chief, code enforcement planning and that, and our new administrator, and really start to focus on this and look and see what can be done. Because obviously, like you say, with HOA, different things, there's a lot of moving parts there, and we can see where we can go forward. So, yes, Mr. Rolfe, I'm sorry.
Well, okay, I just wanted to comment. Thank you for coming forward. You know, this is sticky wicket. I know that the HOA would be the optimum place to deal with it because we have to deal with citywide, but certainly look at this. I don't disagree with your comments or issues on this. I did want to point out, I wasn't aware that at no time during the after-month six-hour period shall a trailer or towed vehicle be detached from towed vehicles. Wow. We got detached trailers all over the city, thousands and thousands of them.
Well, to address that point, I worked with the police, and they were very helpful in getting that issue cleared up. Because we had, if you can imagine, on that same street, two commercial trucks with trailers parked one after another. And they actually were blocking an elderly woman's mailbox for over a week, and so she wasn't getting her mail. The problem is, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, you know, some people, and this has happened with this individual, is they will retaliate very quickly if you do anything that, you know, infringes on what they think is their right. And so, people, you know, they're afraid. The elderly woman, she didn't do anything. The person who is basically legally responsible for her, their solution was to have the mailman deliver the mail to his mailbox, because the guy would not move the trailer. And I was hesitant to be the only one in my neighborhood who's constantly calling in to the police. And it wasn't in front of my house either. And so, it's like, well, why are you calling in for someone else, you know? So the police, though, were effective finally in getting those commercial vehicles with trailers ticketed, and that stopped. Okay? But now we're back to, and he knows this, we're back to 3/4-ton and less vehicles that can be parked there indefinitely.
Okay, well, we'll definitely, you know, keep it going. And Mr. Sanders?
This started some months ago, and I know you've been dealing with it for about two years. And I had a proposal to change the ordinance about a month ago.
Oh, really?
And so, I'm going to make a recommendation that we do change the ordinance to not have commercial vehicles on city streets if they're, you know, unless they're changing out the AC unit for somebody, but not to park your personal, your commercial vehicles on the streets overnight, boats and trailers. And I'd like to make a motion that we look at this ordinance...
Direct our attorney to...
Direct our attorney to look at it, and our city administrator to look at it, to change this ordinance, because you're not the only person that's complained to me about this, you know, throughout the city. And I see that there's a, unless we change the ordinance, it's not going to happen. So, you know, we can go out there and ticket and not ticket, and they're actually abusing the system, and our police force has little authority to do anything on these vehicles that you're talking about. So I'm asking for a motion in a second to look at this real seriously in the next council meeting for...
Can we ask the chief to speak to that? And I think if it's all right, Mr. Sanders, I think we can, we're going to have a workshop, and I think we could probably have Mr. Rudisell bring up some options at the workshop, so then we can bring it right to the next meeting if...
Well, I want to make sure that this doesn't get swept under the rug and just keep, you know, pushing it down the road. I'm serious about this. This needs to happen, and I don't want to see this as done as administrative. We'll talk about it. Because it's time to act.
Sure, we actually already, quite, this, around about a month ago, we've come up with some options that we're actually ready to present to Mr. Perry and Scott. So we're happy to, you know, discuss this.
So our next council meeting, you'll be prepared to discuss changes in ordinance to help this?
I think it would probably be better to maybe get the flavor of council before meeting because there's, you know, there's always a slippery slope when it comes to issues about parking on street and off-street. And so, we've got some options. It just depends on where we want to go with this, but we're more than ready to engage you in some discussions, and then we can come back.
We're not talking about parking on the street for the homeowners. We're talking about commercial vehicles. It's pretty obvious they're used in their business, and they should be at their business locations, and they're just using the city streets for their commercial business parking. It's not, it's not, it's not, somebody mentioned to me, like, well, villagers are going to come unglued because they can't, no. You can't put your ABC electric out there, or MYZ electric, or whatever it might be. So it's not about parking for individuals, even though we do have some issues with that, with parking on the sidewalks, parking in the medians, in public right-of-ways. That has caused me a lot of grief with people walking, saying that they cannot, they can't walk down, they have to walk in the street versus walk on the sidewalk because people are parking on the sidewalks. And to me, that needs to stop, and we need to have stricter enforcement of that. So I'm hoping that the next meeting, when it ends, the next meeting, it's...
We're going to have a workshop on October 6th. I was going to tell you that. So we can maybe get some information at that, so we can then push it to the next, either the 13th or that.
So the, I would like to have it done for the next... The, I would like to have it done for the next regular council meeting in October 13th. So, we can workshop it, I don't have a problem with that, to get the ideas out here. So, but it's, we've discussed this long enough.
But I think also, and I'm not in disagreement with everything you said, I think one of the things you have to look at is some people have their home businesses. So, how do you, we've got to figure out the right way, because if that's a person's home business, and they have their vehicles at their business address, which is their home business, it might be more of an HOA, because I lived in an HOA. So, there's a lot of things that I think, if we don't get right the first time, could come back to get us. And I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, Mr. Sanders.
I'm not sure a home business has graphics on their personal cars. I mean, you know, generally, a home business...
I don't know all the laws.
I don't, I don't either. But I know, you know, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of people who work from home, but they don't have, I'm a homebody, and put that on the side of their vehicle, and park it out in front, so, and block the streets off with it. I'd ask for the public to come in and tell me if they've got a home business, if they've got signage on their vehicles.
And to address that...
Sir, let me get to the rest of the council. Mr. Roth?
I was just gonna say, I definitely have no problem moving forward on some kind of solution. I'm just, I know that there used to be a rule, this obviously has been then changed, used to be 16 feet or more, that with, you know, commercial vehicles and everything. So, that was easy, that was easy to designate.
16 feet or more in...
Just that vehicles, you know, commercial vehicles longer than that.
Oh, okay, okay.
That used to be, used to be a measuring stick. What I'm worried about is, you know, commercial vehicles, three-quarter ton, three-quarter ton's a pretty standard pickup. So, I mean, how do we designate between what, so someone can say, my truck's a commercial vehicle, that's a three-quarter ton, we're arguing over, you know, this is where we get into it. I mean, I know as a homeowner, you guys have one view, we have to watch where we don't create an ordinance that's so broad that it's, you know...
So, in regards to that, one, I think here is obviously that they're painted with the logo of the company. But, that F-350 on the top picture, my HOA, if he had parked that in the driveway, which he has, I asked him, what is your definition of a commercial vehicle? Because we're not allowed to mark, park commercial vehicles in our driveways. And so they had a list of things, like, for example, can you see in the bed of that truck, commercial equipment, tools, supplies, ladders? And so I actually went over, and I had to take a picture of that and show it to my HOA, to show, yeah, there's all these spools and spools of electrical wire, and ladders and other equipment in there that are obviously being used for a commercial purpose. And to go back to Bill Sanders' comment about sidewalks, I mean, you can see in that top picture on the left, that panel van is blocking the sidewalk. And when that F-350 is parked in that driveway, it is also blocking the sidewalk. The other point that I didn't mention, but it's relevant to Bill's comment, is I've seen it, I have a security camera, Nest camera, which, if you ever played with, you can just scroll through the whole day very quickly. And I've watched, day in and day out, you know, employees come in, park their vehicle on the side of the street, pick up a commercial vehicle, they're gone for six or eight hours, they come back, and it's just, you know, it's like living across from an AC warehouse.
All right, Mrs. Coker, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yeah, just follow up on that. So, hearing what you're saying and looking at this, because like I said, the, so the F-250 that you're commenting, that's exactly what...
350, 350.
Okay, so anyway, getting into a 250 class, that would be, that would be the sticky wicket we would get into, someone saying it's commercial, someone saying it isn't. I'd rather not get into some kind of issue like that. I was just thinking about your situation and a possible solution. Rather than saying outlawing it, we could, what, come up with something where no more than one. Obviously, the problem is, this guy's got three.
Oh, they have more than three. They have a lot out in East County. I've seen, I've seen three commercial vehicles, so, on the street, not including this driveway, including a trailer, which is brightly colored, all parked. So, two vehicles, one with a trailer on one side of the street, another one on the other side of the street, and you're, now you've necked down that street to one lane.
Right. So, anyway, I was just thinking out loud of a solution that maybe if we, because in this particular situation, this is literally out of control. If we had a rule of no more than one, the neighborhood could probably live with that.
Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, I completely agree with everything that's being said, especially as a Realtor, that's affect your property values. But I don't want to go too quickly, so that we, I think we need to go through it, because I know the legislature, just in this last session, addressed some of the home-based businesses, and so they may have precluded us from a few things on that. But I think maybe through either signed ordinances, as far as having them displayed there, and also as far as the amount of, the number of vehicles, I'd like to see us look at all of that. But also, the enforcement of it, you know, we've got that issue with a few people with mowing their lawns. You can put in all the ordinances and rules you want, some people are just not going to follow that. And we kind of, as, because I've got that issue that I was gonna bring up later, over some lawns. And, you know, we can go force and mow their lawn for them, but are we gonna put law enforcement there? It would have to be there to protect whoever's mowing the lawn, and how far do we go with that? And we only have so much power.
Well, I think, I think we do have, and I agree with Mr. Sanders, to move this forward as quick as possible. So, we will, with our attorney, have a workshop meeting on October 6th. This will be one of the topics, and go forward, Mr. Sanders.
Just one thing for the record, when I ran for office, I had a 40-foot motorhome, had my signs plastered all over. Police department told me I had to move it. So, I did. And so I don't see how that's any difference. Now, maybe that was because of politics, maybe it wasn't because of code, I don't know. But I know one thing, I lived next to, in Des Moines, I lived next to an AC contractor, and he put his AC units that were to be installed inside the driveway, is almost all the time. So, he was using it in storage outside. And so, a couple of my friends one night walked to one of the brand-new air conditioners to the street, and City of Des Moines picked it up as trash. So, I don't know, that probably not that good answer. I had some friends that probably just went a little bit too far, but I didn't have anything to do with it.
And just, please, just to respond to you...
Sir, we're gonna, let us have the opportunity to move forward, and we'll get it. We've, it is a problem. So, I think all of us see that, everybody. So, yep, so, all right, we're gonna, we got it. So, all right, thank you. Moving forward with the public comment, Susie Copeland, welcome. Haven't seen you in a while, Ms. Copeland, welcome back.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. As I walked in, it has been a while since I've been here. As I walked in, I noticed that the chambers, you had removed your separation of the rows, the seats, you had the seat, and then you had it blocked off the second seat, and so on. And as we are experiencing high numbers of COVID cases, especially the, our hospitals, our deaths here alone, just in Manatee County, I'm asking that the separation of the rows be reinstated. And also, that I noticed this morning as well, there are members in the chambers that are not wearing masks. I would ask that City Council reinstate that, especially due to our high number of COVID cases and death. I think we have to protect all citizens. And while we all have our own rights and several liberties, I think it's for the masses. We have to be very cautious and try to protect all citizens. So, I ask the mask mandate be reinstated, and the separation of the rows be reinstated as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, just one comment, Mrs. Copeland, the City of Bradenton never did a mask mandate. We did a recommendation. And so, you know, and I mean, I'll state it now, I believe that everyone should be vaccinated, you know, it's your choice, but I'm for it, and I think everyone in this council at some point had mentioned that. So, we appreciate the comments. Thank you. Glenn Gribalina?
Good morning, Glenn Gribalina, for the record, 711028 Street East. Really don't want to be here. I would rather call in, but, again, on public comment, you don't have a phone system. You know, I'm almost in Sarasota. It takes an effort for me to come down here to make a public comment, find a parking spot, take a couple hours of my time, when the county and the school district, I could be having a cup of coffee at my house, making a public comment. You know, you just, you just, you stifle the public that wants to come here. So, let's talk about blight in a marginalized community. This house burnt down a few weeks ago. I wrote you an email, Mayor.
And I forwarded it on...
Right.
And thank you. And Mr. Perry did reach out, so thank you very much. I think he's
got a handle on it. I think you're moving in the right direction. It's, this stuff would not last one week, next to your houses, but in a marginalized community, it lasts months, and sometimes years. Here's a prime example. That house has been there for 15 years. Now, when Spencer came in here and said, oh, we had CRA funds for that to do it, you should have done it. But the previous administrator said, oh, no, we need to get some money out of this. So, he drew up a contract to have it demolished, and he still hasn't done anything with it. But you guys went back on your word. Are you telling me you can't find $5,000 to demo that house that's been derelict? The other ones, I don't know. I mean, it looks like that one with no roof's been there for just as many years. But this has got to stop. You wonder why marginalized communities stay marginalized? Because you don't knock them down. There has to be a process. There has to be a process, you know? So, what is the process? You don't have one so far. You know, Mr. Perry's moving in the right direction, but here's the problem, it's not my job. Well, it should be somebody's job. You know, when you guys go knocking on doors to get reelected, why don't you go knock on doors to help the folks that are struggling with these ISARS and these health hazard entraps? You know, it should be the people in their districts and the mayor to go, hey, we're here to help. Understand, you can't afford to knock the house down, but we might be able to find some CRA funds to do that. You know, we have a beautiful butterfly park, probably costs $5,000 to put a water line in there, but yet, within a stone's throw away, we've got that house that's been sitting there for 15 years. It's unacceptable. There's no reason these structures should be standing for years, sometimes decades. So, why, why would we continue to put our children and neighbors at risk? You devalue the property, you bring undesirables into the neighborhood, and that neighborhood will stay marginalized. We can do a better job. You got the money. Five, $6,000, why would you not want to have a nice, clean lot that's either sellable, or the owner can rebuild on it, rather than a derelict structure that has been sitting there for decades? It's unacceptable. So, I hope, Mr. Perry, I know he's got a handle on it, he did reach out to me, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I reached out to the fire chief, thought maybe we could, we can demo with a fire hazard, I don't know. But we need to move in the right direction in getting rid of the blight, otherwise, the marginalized communities will stay marginalized. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Glenn, is one of those houses the one you and I went over and looked at, or is that, that one gone now?
That's the one behind War Temple Church.
You're kidding me, that's still there?
Still there.
And that, that's been a long, I thought we had that approved, and we, attorney to...
Mr. Perry can talk to that.
Well, I will in a minute. But I agree with you on a lot of this. Here's, here's two problems. We don't want to be tearing people's houses down and cleaning it up for them, and then they say, thank you, that now becomes a burden expense of the taxpayers for somebody else's tearing their house down. If, if we tear the house down, we're gonna lean it, or we're gonna buy it. We're gonna tear houses down for free with other people's tax money.
You had CR, you had CRA funds to do that. You could take it from the Tree Trust Fund and move a few thousand bucks. It's not...
You're not suggesting that we, we tear that house down and give them back a clean lot, are you?
Yes, I am.
Well, why would we do that?
Because it's been, it's a health hazard for 15 years. Why would you, why would you put the daycare less than 50 feet away?
Well, you wouldn't. But doesn't the homeowner have some responsibility or accountability?
He does, he does. But a lot of people are poor. That's a marginalized community.
Well, then he, then he shouldn't, I understand he's poor. But it should be a lean on the property then, that if somebody else wants to come in and develop it, they'll pay it off, so that other taxpayers doesn't have to pay that.
Well, Carl, and the attorney did go through that. Unfortunately, Mr. Spencer has balked on signing that contract for some reason.
Because he doesn't want the property leaned, probably. I don't know, I haven't talked to him. Anyway, I agree with you, and we need to look at that, and we are looking at that in the CRA. Matter of fact, we have some funding already budgeted for that. But to go around and tear down people's bad buildings and to give it back to them free, I'm not inclined to do that. Your other comment about, and then Mr. Perry can answer that, what we're gonna do on that one, because that's been going on too long, but you just told me, gave me the answer, he wouldn't sign it. This calling in, we don't want, I agree with you, we need to be able to call in. But we don't want it to become a thing where nobody shows up and takes a little bit more extra time to come down here and talk to us about it, that they just call in repetitively. You know, every week, they're calling in, same people. So, is that understandable?
No, I think you should call in. I mean, there's a lot of people that can't get down here, they're working, you know, it's an effort to come down here.
Well, they, they're gonna have to make the phone calls, so they can't work at home, or they can't work at their business and make a phone call to City Hall.
I just think, I just think the more opportunity the public has to communicate with this board should be available. Everyone else does it.
I agree.
School district does it, the county does it, the Port Authority does it, everyone does it. That's all. It should make it easier.
Well, I agree. Maybe we need to go to live, live TV, and then they can watch it, and then they can call in or whatever, but...
There has to be a solution.
The comments have been that we won't get engaged with the public, and it would just become a call-in complaint line, you know? So, I do have some concerns about that.
Well, you know, the city does, or the county does.
Yeah, but we don't do everything a county does.
They allow 30 minutes, and then they take public comment at the end. So, it does not disrupt the business meeting.
I understand.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry, did you have a comment on the...
Just briefly.
On that house?
Mr. Mayor.
I think I knocked on that house to campaign, nobody opened the door.
They responded. They don't think they voted for you?
No.
Okay. As relates to that property, I did reach out to Mr. Glen, and there's been a history with that property. It had been slated, obviously, for demolition and try to resolve it. It's a situation that, since I've been here in the short period of time, I think we do have to look at a process of, that's how it's typically handled, as it relates to two types of things that go on with these properties. Yes, they're blighted, often they're dwellings, sometimes they're commercial properties. Two components to it, code enforcement, as far as the property's condemnation, not meeting code requirements and the like. The second one being a nuisance abatement, that the property becomes an attractive nuisance for vagrants, homeless people, criminal activity, and everything in between. And absolutely, the, it leads to the further marginalization of that neighborhood, and blight therein, and diminution of property values in the neighborhood. As far as funding sources go, yeah, if it's in a, if it's in a CRA, we could probably use some of that funding. If it isn't, sometimes, and I have to talk with Ms. Singer, who we've had conversations with from the code enforcement perspective, the community development block grants, we used in Albuquerque where I was at, to do some of these teardowns, knockdowns, whatever you want to call them. As it relates to the aspect of leaning it, that's typically what the procedure is, that a lien is put against the property. And sometimes, those liens get perfected, and sometimes they don't. It has to do with the lien statute in the state. In New Mexico, you had to perfect a lien within four years, meaning that we had to basically foreclose on the property, thereby taking a ownership interest in it, saying this property owner owes us money, we haven't been paid on our lien, so we have to perfect the lien, we want the property. And that's a tough situation. Typically, what happens is, is property owners, the way sometimes they obtain the property is through a pass down of, you know, their grandmother or whatever, they don't have the funds for it and the like. So, we work with them. And councils are typically reluctant to just act so quickly that you don't give the property owner an opportunity to fix it. But my experiences has been that probably in about two-thirds of those cases, the property owners just don't have the resources to improve the property. The city does have to move in, take action on behalf of the community. That's kind of a complicated process that we're talking about. A lot of laws, a lot of community outreach, things like that. So, Ms. Singer and I, and the other appropriate parties, the police department, and the CRAs, and finance and everybody will get together to try to put something together to have a process, because Glenn's right. I think there should be a process where we identify these properties and begin to address the problem, not just on the squeaky wheel gets the grease theory. And so, you know, I'm on board, and it'll be something on, you'll see on my blackboard. That's all I can say.
Thank you. All right, is there any other citizen comment on non-agenda items? All right. Is there any other citizen comment on non-agenda items? Non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, and we have one comment for the consent agenda. Mr. Gabelina?
For the record, Glenn Gabelina, 710-28th Street East. This is the ground lease I'd like to talk about. I'm on board with this, with this moving forward. Chief Bevan reached out to me. We had a nice discussion on it. I'm all on board. I've never been against this project. I'm for 100 percent. It's the process. Again, it's the process. The county tells you you need another 35 acres. I get that. But your, your deal is not with the county. It's with the school board, who owns the property, and the city, who wants the additional 35 acres. So I reached out to Mr. Kennedy, and I said, "Where's the lease?" I'm all about documentation, transparency, and accountability to the public. That's your job to provide those documents. If you look at a school district agenda, there's thousands of pages. You look at a county agenda, there's thousands of pages. Everything is in there. So now we're, we're doubling the land mass. We don't have a revised lease. We don't have a survey, so how would we know if they're going to trespass or not? This is a regular real estate transaction. How would you not have those components into the, into this land, into, into this revised land lease? You know, where is the original lease? The public should have a right to examine those occu, those documents and the instruments that will be conveyed to make this ground lease legal. You provide none of that. So I did, I did reach out to, again, you know, no lease, no survey, you know, and we think it's, it's legally sufficient. I don't know on whose radar, not mine, from the 30,000 feet looking down as, as, as a taxpayer. And actually, we're a landowner, because we're the school district, and we own that property, and we're conveying you 35 acres of our property. So I just want to point out that this is not a standard. All the documents may be there, and I hope they are, and I'm sure they are, but why can't we see it? Now, I've reached out to Charlie and said, "It better be on the school agenda on Tuesday," because those documents, they're, they're, they're the leasing, they're leasing you that land, so they should draw up that doc, that document.
Well, first off, I'm going to correct you, and we tried to correct you the other day, that we own the land. City of Bradenton owns it. They're leasing it from us, so you have the facts wrong. So, and, and we gave that to you the other day. I believe the chief was going to do it. I talked to, because again, then Mr. Kennedy and I talked, Superintendent Saunders and I talked. So you think we don't pay attention to you sometimes, but, you know, it's, it's.
So you have the lease?
So it's, it's with the city. So Mrs., Mrs. Barnaby, did you?
Yes.
We own the property, sir. We don't have to have a lease with it. We own this.
Okay. So where's the school district coming? You leasing it to the school district?
Yeah, they're leasing it from us, and that's all the documentation is there, so.
So.
Yeah, so again, just the facts matter, and we got to get that out correctly. And again, that's why, right away, I responded to Mr. Perry and the chief, as well as called Mr. Kennedy right away, and called Superintendent Saunders, and so information correct is important.
Then I, then I apologize, and thank you for, for, for pointing that out. I will take it up with the school board. I mean, that's, that's their, my beef with the school board, not with you. So I apologize for reading it backwards.
No, that's, that's all right. And, and so, because I know a lot of times, stuff like this comes up, and I'm, I'm all for documentation as well. So, but FYI on this, this is, this is property that was bought a long time ago. It's, it's way out east. It's too, so far out east, it's really, you know, got no value other than farmland. We bought it for sludge material from our, you know, it's over 600 acres. So we're talking about 70, I think it's like 680 acres, 70 out of it. There's still 600 acres of city investment in there that we paid very little for. I don't know what the value is out in the middle of the boondocks. I, you know, not high. So, and, and for whatever reasons, it's, it's surplus property. PD's always used it for, well, it's not, it's not been declared surplus property, but we're not, we're not using it for our intended, I, I don't believe I was involved with the purchase of it. The purpose was for excrement material from the wastewater plants to be dumped out there. It was a sludge, sludge area. We've never used it for that. So it's just, it's just this land in the middle of nowhere that we just don't, we just don't deal with. It has no great value. It was, I don't know what it'll be used for someday. But, you know, I, I don't, anyway.
It was a good investment.
It was a good investment. It gives us an opportunity, if a situation comes up with our wastewater, to have an opportunity to solve it for our citizens without a lot of money additional. So, I mean, it was a great job by the city years ago before any of us.
Back in the 60s.
Yeah, that, that did that to help out. And, and again, it's not surplus, because it's, if we run into a situation with our wastewater, we have it. So, and again, an opportunity came through Dr. Hope's with the school board to us, that at the time, that was, it's a great opportunity. It's a little adjustment here, but I think it's going to be a, make us, in the city, the county, all of the police departments, others that will be able to utilize that facility, improve what we do in our police forces and training and all of that. So, and it's going to be something that we lease the land to them, and they're going to build it. So anytime we can get something and somebody else to, to build for us, we want to, and you, and, and it's going to benefit our citizens, it's a win for this city. So that's important to me, and as this council has brought up. Mr. Sanders?
Glenn, you're, you're right and you're wrong, but it was kind of a fluid situation where we had to increase the acreage from 35 to 70, and I, I understand that that was some wetlands we threw in there just because of the requirements, and that, uh, this is, you know, property that we, we bought a long time ago. Didn't have much invested in it. And now, the, the school board is willing to give us about $4 million to put this range on there. It's clearly outside. The only concerns I have is how we get in and out of it, and then what, what, what's the $4 million look like? And that is still pending. We don't have that. That will be, I assume that will be brought back to us.
Fluid situation.
Yeah, because we don't know how you're getting into it. We haven't done a survey, so yes, that's true. This was kind of a preliminary lease contract that's just said generally 35 acres. So we don't know exactly where point A, point B, C, and D are. Now we know it had to increase, so we will get that. You know I will get that. You know, I'm, I'm big on contracts and, and, and surveys and so forth, so that, you know, we know exactly where it is, and it's buffered so that the public doesn't get, you know, into a gun range. So it, it is, like I said, it's kind of fluid, and, and there's, we don't, we don't even know what the building's going to look like. It'll be designed by Bradenton PD. There, we, we've kept, which is something I insist on, we kept that within our system, that the chief is, is responsible for it, and that, that we have control of who goes there and who doesn't. And so it's, it's a good thing, and so you'll see more on this as it develops and tightens up with the survey. Yes, there, there has to be a survey. There has to be how ingress, egress, how to get in and out of it, and what the buildings are going to look like.
Thank you. Find some money for the, the Sheriff's Youth Ranch, because they just closed that. Talked to the sheriff last night, and, you know.
Manatee County had $900 million on their budget this year. Maybe they could have slipped in a couple million there.
Thank you. All right, so the chair will entertain a motion on consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Zagan.
Got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. All right, moving forward, and it got a little longer than I was hoping, but for SU.21.2909, they've asked to pull that to continue it to our November 3rd meeting. So if there's anyone in the public that's here to speak to that, we, we would let you speak today. If not, we'll move forward, and that'll be continued to November 3rd.
Mr. Mayor, just a point, and Mr. Rudis will probably have this, just to perfect the record, that the request was done at the, at the, um, request of the applicant, basically. Right, and we do need to go ahead and open that public hearing, and then we'll have a motion to continue to a date and time certain.
All right, so on, do we want Mrs. Melton to read it into the record?
Yes.
Yes.
SU.21.2909, request by Trevor Green, agent for Charles Thomas owner for a special use permit expansion to extend an existing residential boat dock from 580 feet to 930 feet long into the Manatee River with an alternate repair in line to an extension of the sideline of the property. The property is in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District and is located at 3402 Riverview Boulevard, Bradenton, Florida, 34205. Parcel ID number 35470000609.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public.
We leave it open, and we'll have a motion to continue.
Leave it open to continue it then that way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'll offer a motion to continue the public hearing to the November 9th.
9th?
Or, third. Sorry. I have the 9th down. November 3rd, City Council meeting.
Second.
We motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote. Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, for the next, Mrs. Singer? Do we want to read it into the record?
Should we administer the oath?
Yes, please.
Anyone wishing to address council, city council during the following public hearings will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate?
Thank you. Mrs. Singer, your Myra?
This is for SB.21.2424, request by Adam Jacobson of JBHFFLC, agent for Gulf Village, Inc., owner for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat in the R2 One and Two Family Residential Zoning District. The property is located at 1201 27th Street East and 2906 11th Avenue East, Bradenton, Florida, 34208. Parcel ID numbers are 1387000050 and 1387200007.
Good morning, Council. Myra Schwartz, Planning Manager. This is a case for a, a request for a preliminary subdivision plat. It is generally located 1207, 1201, 27th Street East and 2906 11th Avenue East. It's a compilation of, of single owner, single, of singly owned parcels. It, at one time, had multiple addresses, and so that explains the difference in the addresses, but the official is 1207. The applicant is Adam Jacobson of JBHFFLC, agent for the owner Gulf Village Incorporated. He's requesting a preliminary plat approval of a subdivision comprised of 33 duplex two-family dwellings that totaled 66 individual residential units at this location. This is the general, the, um, general parcels and an associated right-of-way that is to be, there is also a request to vacate the rights-of-way with this parcel, and you'll have Hurst reading of that today. The future land use category is residential medium with a base density of 10 units per acre. There is a total of just over 12 acres here, and the maximal, maximum allowed density for the site is 126 units. So they're requesting about half of what may be permitted here. The zoning is R2 One and Two Family Residential. Duplex homes are permitted use in R2. The applicant is requesting a preliminary subdivision plat comprised of 33 duplex dwellings worth 66 residential units on the 12.6 acres, with a concurrent right-of-way vacation that's requested to vacate three unused portions of right-of-way that will contribute to the total land. The preliminary plat approval will be contingent upon approval of the related right-of-way vacation request. That's number RV212539. The plat delineates new streets, and that includes an extension of river runway that will connect 27th Street East and 30th Street Court East. The site's within a flood zone, flood zone X, and that means it's at the limits of the base flood and the 2, .2% annual chance or the 500-year flood. This is the plat that has been offered by the applicant. You can see the lots are delineated here. You have got access through 20, from, to and from 27th on the north, on the south. This is to connect a river runway. The North Street continues up and connects to 11th Avenue East, and then the streets are connected by little connector streets. The streets are continuations of the city grid, and the lot sizes are compliant with the land use regulation requirements. The applicant has given a conceptual plan of what's proposed here. Sidewalks are included on all streets. He's proposing a recreation area, excuse me, at this point, and retention areas both on the east side and the west side. The lots do meet the minimum size, minimum lot size requirement of 8,500 square feet for duplex residences in R2, and it also meets the width, minimum width of building line requirements, which is 70 feet. The structures that will be built here are, will be reviewed when building permits are submitted, and they'll be reviewed for compliance with dimensional standards and other land use regulations. This is, let's see, the preliminary subdivision plat does meet the design standards from the land use regulations, 4.2.1. And that includes lot dimensions, streets, natural and man-made features of the sites, of the site, drainage, easements, and recreation areas. The 33 lots do meet or exceed the dimensional requirements, and the proposed density is less than the maximum 126 units. The plat provides the four new streets and the extension of river runway, all of which will be constructed to city standards. The, there, the natural and man-made features of the site, retention areas will be provided according to SWIMED standards and permitting. There are trees to be removed here, and that will be reviewed in detail at the time of the site improvement permit, although, and replacement will be in accordance with Section 2.2.3.1 of the Land Use regs. 124 protected trees are to be removed from this site, and 62 protected trees are to be preserved. There are no wetlands associated with this site. Drainage facilities will meet the Southwest Florida Water Management District. Easements are included to accommodate your public utilities, and that includes sewer water and drainage for every lot. Recreation space is provided, meets the minimum requirement of one acre for 200 dwelling units. Sewer and water will be provided by the city, and there's adequate capacity. Schools, site, the project has been reviewed by the school board, and there's adequate capacity for all services. The next step, should this be approved, the site improvement plan may commence, uh, site improvement permit may be, may commence review. And this, after that, the final subdivision plat could be submitted for final approval by council and recording. Based upon the requirements of the land use regulations, Sections 2.2.11 subdivision plat approval and Section 4.2.1 subdivision of land design standards, staff is recommending approval of SU.21.2424, contingent upon approval of the right-of-way vacation request, RV212539. Planning Commission met in public hearing on August 18th, 2021. They unanimously recommended approval of SU.21.2424, contingent upon approval of the right-of-way vacation, but they recommended approval with exception to delete the interconnectivity requirement of river runway to 27th Street. That has been, that's the remaining issue here. There has been some, um, input by the public and concern about 27th Street itself is a very busy street. It's a Manatee County road. We are limited in what we can do with, with 27th Street, and there's been concern about the connection. about the connection providing traffic, more traffic through the subdivisions surrounding this, and the, and the smaller streets surrounding this, but that's a continued problem. We did speak to Fire Department and Public Works at length about this, offering different solutions, perhaps rather than a full connection, add a stabilized surface between the two so that there would be fire access, or perhaps add some traffic calming in the cul-de-sac that currently exists in the right of, or in River Runway. And that was not accepted by Fire in particular, or by Public Works because of access to the infrastructure and because of delay times, delayed response times by EMS, and both Fire Department and Public Works have requested that this remain as it was planned, as a connection, connection from River Runway to twenty-seventh Street. There is no cul-de-sac on the Jordan Creek side, and so that leaves a couple of homes at the end without a turnaround. It would also leave fire trucks without a turnaround there. And River Runway does have a, an existing cul-de-sac, but part of the agreement.
Go back to the map.
Oh, I'm sorry, certainly.
Yeah, good idea.
Let's go. Okay, so here you can see this. So what we're talking about is this connection right here. River Runway with the agreement, when, when River Runway, can't speak today, River Runway was approved several years ago, their cul-de-sac length exceeds the four hundred foot length that is the maximum allowed by land use regulations, and that was because it was understood that there would eventually be a connection here by whomever developed the adjacent parcel. River Runway developer did fulfill their obligation by providing an easement for connection. And so this is, this is the point that must be decided here today.
Any questions, Mrs. Barnaby?
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that I understand what you have just shared with us. Where the cul-de-sac is.
I'm sorry.
Yes, where the cul-de-sac is. When approval was given for the development on the east side of that, there was plans made to connect the street grid.
That's correct.
And you're also saying that both Public Works and the Fire Department believe we need to maintain that street grid and able to provide the level of service that city residents expect?
That's correct.
One of the things that I think makes the city safer than some of the areas of the county is that the county does not ever try to maintain a street grid. You know, they, they set up developments and they have one way in and one way out, and then they complain about the traffic at that intersection. But for me, if you're saying that both Public Works and Mr. McClellan, I think has stepped us out for a moment, and I know I see the fire marshal in the back, as well as the fire chief, enabled, in order to be able to maintain city services, we, we need that open. To me, that's a very, very important part of this discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Public safety. And I just wanted to make sure that I understood exactly what transpired, both at the, the planning commission meeting and what we're being told today, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Roth?
Thank you. When I was a brand-new councilman who ran on smart growth, one of the first things I did was attended many conferences and trainings about new urbanism, smart growth, city planning, and what I was told is grid, connect, have a grid, keep the grid open. So, I mean, it was just, it's, it's just for, for a multitude of reasons, but just for, just to keep a grid open, a gridded city is a smart city. You know, these cities where you're wandering around, you know, running into dead ends and everything, that's, that's not good planning. So this is a predetermined, now that, this grand, on this, on this graphic in front of me here, and, and the one I'm looking at here, it looks like that, that is an undeveloped parcel, or is that now developed with the, with the circle?
River Run is now in process of development. There are a number of homes already constructed and under construction.
Is that the one? We rendered a document from one of the surrounding neighbors that shows a cul-de-sac with a, a fire safety gate that is not working and a trailer parked in front of it?
That's not on this site. It's a nearby site.
That's not here?
No, it's at a nearby site.
That's, that would be an issue to me. All right, so anyway, if this is all about, because I do, I remember the site where there was going to be a higher-density development going in there. I was one of the votes that, that pushed for a smaller density development to come in, which is what the, the neighbors were all really begging us to do exactly what we've done, and now I'm being asked to not have a grid. That's contrary to my philosophy and all the training that I've ever been taught about how to be a good city planner. So, I mean, I think I've already done as much as I can for this project, and I, I have to support a grid system and, and fire safety, police and fire.
Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, I have to agree. I think public safety is probably one of our, you know, paramount responsibilities up here, so I, I have to say I think keeping that grid system is important. But I had a couple of other questions. Let me get to my, okay, the protected trees, the ones that they are removing, I mean, are, do you, do they give you a plan and you see, I mean, do they, the ones that are being removed, they need to be removed in order to facilitate?
Yes, we require a tree survey with all species and size, and that is, is typically reviewed at the site improvement permit phase, and it is put, we review it in conjunction with a landscape plan. So that we can see what's reasonable, can they develop in this way, and what's the replacement going to be? How much will go to the tree fund? How much can they logically and reasonably replace on the site? So a very thorough review is done at that time.
And, and are, it may be too soon, but, you know, my, I, as far as the retention area, is that going to be fenced off? Is it going to be chain-linked or any, do we know any of that?
No, we don't know that at this point. They're dry retention.
They're dry, okay. And then, what, you said, what are the vest, they, they have vested rights to develop this? How many units was it?
A hundred and twenty-six.
And, okay, and so they're going for almost half of that? Okay, great. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Ms. Coachman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much improvement from, excuse me, from where we started. I'm all for public safety. When there's a need, I'm sure the residents there will agree. This may be too early, too, to talk about, but the trap, the traffic study that was done on twenty-seventh, we know that's a problem. And there's, there's now a grid so that there can be different ways to get in and out. I don't know if it's possible to coordinate or control traffic by, you know, I, I used to live in an area where on certain times of the day, you couldn't make a right turn to go through a neighborhood, you know, to skip through a neighborhood to avoid, so I don't know if in the future we might be looking at something like that so that that might eliminate the traffic going through the neighborhood parts.
The biggest issue is that twenty-seventh Street is a Manatee County street. We are limited in that capacity. We have control over the city streets, which are the smaller local streets in this area. But a good, good point.
Mr. Sanders?
Jim, I didn't see you come back in the room. You know, I asked the county to look at that street because of developments on this and the side, and they promised that this was on their radar. Have you had any conversation with them? That, that was a year ago. You know, because it's, it, to widen the, the lanes in there to connect up to three oh one, is, is there, is there any, is it just silent?
I know that the county has on their long-range plan for twenty-seventh Street to be a four-lane road. I don't know exactly where it sits in terms of, is it a thirty-year plan? Is it a fifty-year plan? It's certainly not a short-term plan, I can tell you that.
Okay.
Now, as part of any traffic impact that is associated with it through the county approval process, because they will need a county approval for the road impact, the county may come back and say you need to put in a turn lane as part of your development.
Right, and that's how we got with that right-turn lane there at Manatee.
Well, that, that was, that's.
But you're talking about a turn lane on up?
I'm saying that potentially for the, the entry or exit from the development itself.
From the development, the turn lane, yeah.
Correct.
Right, so.
Because I can tell you right now, with, without a turn lane, anybody trying to make a left turn into this? Good luck.
Good luck.
At certain times of day, good luck.
Can, do you, do you meet with them or approach them about this, whether it's short-term or long-term, because those developments are really moving pretty fast on the south side of that?
I haven't had any, but I'd be happy to have a conversation with my counterpart.
I think it's, you need to do that, in my opinion, and because this, this is going to get worse and worse, and, and it, the only way to fix it is to widen the road there, so. And I, I don't think there's been a lot of opposition to that, widening that. I think it's, it's, it's well-known that that has.
It's going to take property acquisition.
It's going to take property, I understand, but I, I haven't heard any opposition to that. That's your ward, but it's close to me, and I cut through there all the time, you know, it's, it's a, and there's just more development. I mean, I don't know how many hundred houses, probably four or five hundred houses on the south side of that.
I'll have.
But, yeah, I just say, you know, look, we need to get in front of this and not be proactive to the retroactive, you know, like I said before, you know, let's, let's build the roads first and then the developments, but we're, we're still doing it the opposite way, but it's an opportunity, they need to put that on there, especially if they've got some ARPA money or something like that, that they can, this be a good opportunity. Yeah, I think they're going to have some. We have some, but we're, we'll keep ours and let them use theirs, but that's a county road, and I'd appreciate if you.
Absolutely.
Can get back to us, whatever you had on that. Thank you.
And we can guarantee it's going to be a problem, because it already is.
Yeah, it already is. Traffic, you're right.
Sorry, bro.
All right, any other questions? So we'll let the applicant come up and talk?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. Bear with me just one second here. Kyle Grimes for the record, and I have been sworn, I'm attorney with the law firm of Grimes Galvano, and I'm representing the applicant here. Again, with us today on behalf of the applicant, we have Mr. Adam Jacobson, and we also have our engineer, Mr. Matt Morris, if we have any technical specification questions. Ms. Schwartz did such a great job, I'll try and keep it relatively brief and save some time to answer some questions today. As you mentioned, we are here today for the request for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for thirty-three duplex lots for a total of sixty-six units. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of eleventh Avenue, twenty-seventh Street. It's currently a largely vacant road, or, excuse me, largely vacant parcel. It does have some platted right-of-way going through it from an old nineteen twenty-five plat, I believe it was, that Ms. Schwartz mentioned, and the next agenda item is the first reading for a request to vacate. The surrounding area has largely been developed with single-family and multifamily. We have single-family primarily to the north, and then we have some multifamily projects there to the south. As mentioned, the, the site is zoned R two with a future land use of residential medium. We are, you know, our, our request today falls well within the allowed density under the res medium, as you, as you heard, with sixty-six units instead of the one hundred and twenty. As, here's the site plan, as you saw a moment ago. We are proposing public streets throughout there. This is not a private neighborhood, and to answer your question, there's no plans right now for any gated area. It's similar to the last one we had before you where it's, it will be, you know, privately-owned recreation area and stormwater drainage and things, but as of right now, there's no plans to do any gated, it, it will not be a private gated streets or anything like that. They will be open to the public. And just to address the interconnectivity to the neighboring parcel, that was something that we have always planned for the, the connection there, because the, the neighboring plat did have a dedication of right-of-way about fifty by twenty feet there, that little strip in the middle. So that was always planned, but our client was amenable to, you know, if, so, if the council so decided that they wouldn't, didn't need it, or if fire and safety were okay with the removal, we were okay with it, but of course, we always said we wanted the, the city to look at it and, and get an understanding of whether it's needed. So that was just something we were amenable to, just wanted to put that out there. And happy to talk a little more about it as we get into questions. As, as, we have some examples, just kind of some conceptual plans to give you a little visual of what, what the site will look like. Again, we are going for duplex-style homes on individual lots, on public streets. We, we, we have reviewed the staff report and enjoyed working with Ms. Schwartz on this one, who did a great job. We agree with its findings, that we have met all provisions of the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. The, the planned homes will, will meet all dimensional requirements of the R two zoning district, and so we respectfully ask for your approval of this preliminary subdivision plat, and I'd happy to answer any questions, get any specifics.
Any questions? All right.
If approved, when do you project it to be started?
Well, we'd like to go into the, the site improvement plan as soon as possible. We do have the, we'll have to have the second reading of the, of the right-of-way vacation, if, if that's approved today, so, you know, there's still some time to go through the process, but he's ready to move forward as, as quickly as reasonable.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, go to the public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We'll open the public hearing at this time. We've got a couple. Susie Copeland, I believe, wants to speak on this.
Okay. While I do like this.
Let you name.
I'm sorry. Susie Copeland, ten, ten, twenty-seventh Street East, Bradenton. While I approve, I, I like this plan better than the one that was presented in twenty twenty, and I just need to ask Ms. Schwartz if I heard correctly, there are three egresses and ingresses to this property, twenty-seventh Street, I think she said River Run, and what was the other street? Eleventh Avenue. But I also heard her say, it's all going to run back into twenty-seventh Street. Is that what I heard?
No.
Here is ingress and egress to twenty-seventh Street at two points.
So two points to, from River Run, they're going to make that left and come back into twenty-seventh Street East?
You go straight through to twenty-seventh Street? Yes, ma'am.
And therein lies the problem for me. Twenty-seventh Street is a very, very busy street. Now, if, if, and which the owner has the right to build his property, why are the residents on twenty-seventh Street East bearing the brunt of this increase? That's my objection. We need to have that traffic flow through some of those neighborhoods east of twenty-seventh Street East. It can't all come out on twenty-seven. That's just making that street impossible. And so I ask that you consider, and whatever you want to do, but we've got to get some relief on twenty-seventh Street, and that's why I'm here today. We need the relief, and the approval of this plan can help us relieve and yet approve the project, but take that traffic somewhere else, not all back on twenty-seventh Street East. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, Ms. Copeland?
Yeah, Ms. Copeland, this is why we were discussing the ability to go through that cul-de-sac, which will take us, it's called the bypass, that some of your other neighbors are opposed to.
Right.
That, what, this is why we were discussing the grid system. That I think, I was in agreement with what you're saying, is that I would want that gate to be open, or the approved cul-de-sac cut-throughs to allow people to get in and out. That's why we were using the term grid system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, it looks like Dean Jorgensen.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Dean Jorgensen, I live at eleven oh seven Tropical Drive. As you'll see on this overhead I have here, the depiction of Jordan Creek there is in like a lime, lime green, you see that, and the yellow lines there depict the planned entrance and exits. If you were to permit, I mean, I know the planning department had recommended that you not have that requirement to cut through River Trace. But if you do allow that, that is going to put another entranceway to our neighborhood, bypassing Twenty-seventh Street. I mean, I urge you, if you have not been out there, go out there, sit out there at the intersection of Oak and Eleventh, between four and six in the evening, and then probably six and eight in the morning. And you'll see the traffic that bypasses through our neighborhood. It's a, it's a safety hazard. And that's why we were not in favor of, you know, them making that connection, because that makes, you're probably going to see people cutting down through Eleventh, and also through whatever the name of that street's going to be, probably Twelfth, through the, through River Trace. So we're going to have, you know, another access to our neighborhood, cutting through our neighborhood. So that's why we were supportive of that being eliminated. The other thing, Mr. Roth, that you had asked about was that gate, okay, that's blocked. Okay, that's on Eleventh. Sorry, that's on Oak?
Yeah.
Back about fifteen or so years ago, Fred Munn was developing that property back there. And Fred was required, it was the recommendation actually of the planning department at that point, to not connect Oak Street to Eleventh, which now facilitates cutting through our neighborhood, creates the bypass. The planning department recommended that, the fire department at that time said, no, we want that connected. So now, we have this problem with the bypass going through our neighborhood. That gate there was also required by the fire department. Fred Munn put that in there, and that gate has never worked. I mean, probably the day that they put it in. But ever since then, that gate has been broken, you can see it's got a chain that's wrapped around it, and that trailer's been there.
What year was that?
That was like fifteen years ago, is when that, when that development was, you know, they first started developing that.
Okay, because I, I know that there has been a couple of instances like this, where, you know, these things have taken place. I would always push for there to be connectivity. But obviously, this was done, I don't remember if I was, if this would have been fifteen years ago, if anything, it would have been brand new. But I can say, I know we have a fire marshal in the back, that this is, if there's a requirement that that be operable, and it's not, that's not okay.
Oh, I agree. It's also a full curb there, so I mean, emergency vehicles.
Well, they could actually get over that, but if there was supposed to be a safety opening there, and it's obviously with that trailer, it looks like that trailer's growing, we, vines, so.
Trailer, after, when I took this picture, the trailer disappeared for about two weeks, and it's, I walked through there the other day, and it's back.
Okay. But this, that's something that needs to be corrected, but, you know, and. I, it's, I do believe that I'm, I understand why you don't want the connectivity there, but I also got to look at safety, like, this concerns me because this is a safety issue.
Right.
So, I mean, I have to look at the other end of it, and I can only share with you, I live in the exact center of the city, and you have no idea what cut-through traffic is.
I mean, rush hour, I mean, that's, you know.
Believe me.
But, you know, my suggestion, I mean, it's, you know, what do I know about this stuff? But the four-way stop at the intersection of Twenty-seventh and Ninth, and then the no-turn-on red, and I know they've got a green arrow there now, but that's what slows that traffic down, and that's what causes people to cut through our neighborhood. They're cutting through the neighborhood for one reason, one reason alone, time. They want to make time. You know, but the speed limit is twenty-five and fifteen. You go down Oak, and then where you make that little hairpin turner, that's fifteen miles an hour down there. And there's also a dip in the road. And people are coming, and they're flying through there, you know.
Maybe just take out that boat ramp.
So, yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Barnaby?
Sir, if you, if you would yield for just a moment, and let me ask the fire marshal to step up, please. I would certainly appreciate that, Mr. Jorgensen. And do you mind putting this picture back up?
Oh, sure.
I would appreciate it, thank you. Fire marshal, were you sworn at the beginning? Okay, we need to swear you in.
Never been sworn before.
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate?
I do.
Your name and title for the record?
My name's Ken Langston, fire marshal, city brake.
How long have you done that, sir?
I've been with the city for twenty-seven years.
I watched your face when this picture went up, even with the mask on. I'm pretty much, because I know you can pretty much guarantee this is going to be looked at today. Is that, is that what you were, that face was telling me?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes, I, every time I've been out there, the trailer's been not there. This cut-through was supposed to have been taken care of when Fred Munn started developing this. Then the property all went dead. So they never pushed it any further. Now that it's being developed again, we'll have to get back on to them to finish this up. So that's the reason it's in the shape that it is, is because of what happened when, I guess Fred Munn passed away, and someone took over or something, and I think that's what happened.
But if you could turn some attention to this promptly, I would certainly appreciate it, because.
No problem, taken care of today.
This is the stuff that make council women have nightmares.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Jorgensen.
Like I said, just, it's got to be looked at, Twenty-seventh, you know, I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time. I mean, you folks and the county got to come together and come up with a solution there. Because as I say, it's just not acceptable for them to be cutting through.
And on your card, it says you're in favor of this bypass.
No, I'm not in favor of the bypass.
What are you in favor of?
I'm in favor of the development.
Oh, development, okay.
Yeah, this is way better than what they were trying to get last year.
Favor of the development, I wanted to make sure.
In favor of the development, but the bypass, cutting through, you know, here's the other thing. If you look at this other, their plat diagram there, it's like, for law enforcement purposes, you know, escape and evasion. Somebody could cut down Twenty-seventh, cut down that Twelfth, cut right through River Run and out, out by the boat ramp. Again, it's, you know, that creates that, they're two different neighborhoods as well. I mean, it's a duplex neighborhood that's being proposed, and it's a single-family neighborhood is the River Trace. They're single-family homes. And so, I mean, I just see that it's, it's going to be another nightmare, an added nightmare to our neighborhood for that traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one other card for Kathy Kokachalone.
My name is Kathy Kokachalone, I resided at nine zero six Tropical Drive. Built that house twenty-seven, thirty-seven years ago, so seen a lot of changes. Council members should have each received a letter, an email from me regarding this. For the record, it's, you know, I like the development better than preceding developments. I'm opposed honestly to any development along Twenty-seventh Street, because for years now, years, we've been discussing the issues of Twenty-seventh Street. Understand it's a county road, but it should, it should have some bearing on your decisions as to whether or not more development needs to be put on that road that's in the city, even though that's county. You should be addressing that. It's just getting worse and worse and worse with more and more and more being built. The cut-through traffic is really a concern. Now, when they expanded that neighborhood and they built Oak, you know, Oak's a nice wide new road. However, these people that are making that cut-through, trying to beat time, as you can see, right here, that is, that's not a nice wide road. That is a very, very narrow road that's been there for many, many, many years, very narrow. Only this summer, only this summer, after all these years, has the city erected. And I think that's maybe because we've been addressing this issue of the development and writing letters regarding this cut-through traffic, trying to rush through there, put up dangerous curve signs for that, for that turn. That's a very, very narrow turn. And what happens is, when they want to take that turn, they want to kind of do it in the middle of the, of the road and not staying in lanes. And I've had many near misses, you know, having to move over because they're encroaching in my lane, coming into the neighborhood, coming out of the neighborhood. There is nowhere to, if you go off, if you're exiting the neighborhood from here and then coming this way, there's nowhere to go except for the mangroves. And there's also a concrete utility pole right there, that if you're trying to get out of somebody's way, and you have to run off the road, you're in danger of hitting that. And it's only like maybe, I would say, less than a yard from the actual pavement. And then there's the mangroves, there is nowhere to go. On the other side of the road, in here, you're in someone's yard. That is not conducive for all this traffic to be routed through there because of the problems that have not been addressed between the city and the county in regards to Twenty-seventh Street. Something has to be done. To think that we're going to put more people on that road when the problem has been recognized year after year after year after year, but nothing's been done.
Thank you. Comments, yes?
Excuse me, have you, have you gone down and talked to the county about addressing Twenty-seventh Street? Because I know we hear about it, and to be honest, I was going to look into, from what you've just said, whether the city can do something to make that road with those curves. I have no idea, this is a new topic to me, but what, if there's any way we can improve on that, I will look into that. But have you ever gone down to the county and expressed your concerns about the safety of Twenty-seventh? Because we have, and, you know.
And that's the thing, we feel like, you know, it's been recognized by the city, by our administrators. You know, you have more pull than we do, we feel like you should be working together to solve this problem.
We actually don't, you have, you have more pull in a public meeting than we do.
Well, I think and I know Mr. Sanders is on the NPO, and I'm on it, and, you know, we've, that's been discussed quite a bit. The biggest issue is, and I know Mrs. Copeland would probably attest to this, to do anything to that road is going to take land, and it's going to take people's property. And, you know, that's another issue, so I don't think, and then there's a lot to the south that we don't control, that you're going to start seeing a lot of development to the south that, you know, becomes an issue, and that's where the citizens might have a better opportunity to talk with the county and this opportunity, but, because again, people have property rights too, you know. I mean, everybody has property rights.
And I agree. Personally, I feel like the city should put a moratorium on any further building along Twenty-seventh Street until the problems with that road have been, maybe not eliminated, but improved. Why are you, why are you allowing more and more and more development when you are aware of the issues and the dangers of that road? And what it's doing with cut-through traffic, four-way stops, you know, no turn-on red, just, you know this. So why are you continuously approving more and more and more development on this road? Why don't you seize that?
People have property rights.
Burt Harris Act.
Vested rights.
There's a lot of things that people have property rights and do things that, as long as they meet the regulations, they can do it. And again, it is, it's something that we've all lived with our whole life, but at one point, where you live was a field, other people have lived. So I mean, everybody has an opportunity to bring, and as long as they meet the laws, sometimes, you know, we can't. We can't put moratoriums on things just because we don't like it.
Shouldn't there be some sort of requirement for the impact on the infrastructure for that area? I mean, I understand property rights, but, you know, if the infrastructure is not keeping up with that, it shouldn't just keep continuing? Like, if you want to keep approving these developments, then, you know, I feel like you should be pushing harder with the county to resolve some of these issues.
Mrs. Barnaby?
Yes, ma'am. I would recommend that you Google the Burt Harris Act, and you read about it and see the impact it can have on a community and on the taxes that you pay. Because it's a big sticky wicket. And it's, it's one of those things that when we sit up here, we have to sit up here as judges, and we have to look at the evidence that is presented to us. When I was a little girl, I know that street because on Sunday afternoons, we used to drive over to Brayden Castle. I played on Brayden Castle, it's really not my fault it started disintegrating. It's tabby, it's going to disintegrate. And then we would drive, because there used to be, you could see eagles over the Brayden River. So we would drive, I know that road, I've been on that road many a time.
So when someone gets hurt on that hairpin turn, cutting through that neighborhood on a very narrow road.
Technically, the best thing about that road is the hairpin turn, because if you take it too fast, you're going to have a problem, and you're only going to do it one time. So it's, it's a traffic calming feature that I know, and it sounds crazy to say that.
It's a dangerous curve.
It's, but if you know it's there, you don't speed through it.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, so the last time this project was here, I was, I was a tie-breaking vote to keep the density lower. And at the time, there is something called Burt Harris Act, where, you know, I was looking for a little tiny bit of wiggle room to where I could justify the decision I took. Now, what you don't know is when you all left, I took a great deal of criticism for that for the next six months. You guys were done, I wasn't. And that was to do what I thought was illegal and justifiable, but that was just to lower the density. And you're saying we should allow no, no development. We would spend the rest of our time in court, we don't, we don't have that right. But what, I'm going to go back to the point of, if you feel more comfortable coming down here and asking us to do something about a county road, you're wasting your time. We don't have any control over the county, they don't, they don't want to hear from me. They will listen to you.
Mr. Sanders?
Well, I got a different take on that, I agree with you a hundred percent, and I think it's, the problem is government itself, that we're not, we're not taking care of the roads, because I hear the same complaint over and over and over. We build first and then build the roads, and it should be kind of the other way around, but we've, you know, prioritized our money in the wrong places, and I, I do put pressure on the county and state to fund these things and not let them, you know, sometimes we don't fix things until somebody gets hurt, killed, or out of control, you know, it festers to that point where, we've got a lot of good examples of that around. And so, we have an NPO meeting, I think Monday, twenty-seventh, and, right, twenty-seventh. I'm going to be bringing it up again, I'm going to, you know, put pressure on our city and our county commissioners. We met with a couple of them last night, so, hey, this is, this is now festering up to the point that we've got to do something. Right, you hear that word, Burt Harris, and I, you know, I don't like. Right, you hear that word, Burt Harris, and I, you know, I don't like to mention that, but yes, that, that protects property owners' rights and that's rightfully so. I can't, you know, you can't limit somebody from what they do with their property. But it's our fault that we don't build those roads timely enough to support those developments. And so we have to, it's a county road. We have, and you say, well, you want me to do it? Yeah, it helps. But I, I've got a responsibility to do it too because I represent you. And so I'm going to speak loudly for this. I, I guarantee you, this is not the first time this has happened. It will be the last, and we've got to build these roads faster than, than what we're doing. And we, we can find the money. I mean, we've got some money that's, that's coming through here now that I believe we can do it. And I think, but, but you need your help and your neighbors' help to put pressure on the politicians to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody else? I don't have any other cards. Does anybody else in the public hearing wish to speak during the public hearing? So, close the public hearing. Mr. Rudesell?
I was just going to say should, we should allow for any staff and applicant rebuttal.
Okay. Any staff comment? Applicant rebuttal? Any questions? Yep.
I'll just mention Kyle Grimes again for the record. One quick thing that, you know, we do have certain rights and things there, but it means we can, we also want to work with the area and that's why he's designed something that we feel compatible with there. And that's why we've also provided as many interconnectivity streets as possible to help kind of relieve some traffic in the area. And then to the extent we can on our property, we wanted, we've been talking with staff about providing different traffic calming mechanisms. You know, we can't do anything mile down the road, but to the extent we can on our property with on-street parking, pedestrian crossways, we are trying to do that on our property to, to have some traffic calming in the area to the extent we can. So we, we understand that there's issues, but we're, you know, doing what we can with our property to, to help alleviate to the extent possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, so at this point, Chair will entertain motion.
Requested action taken by the council, move to approve SP 21 dot 2224. Twenty, 2424. 2424.
We have a motion by Mr. Roth to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Is there any further comment? All right, we'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Okay, carries five to zero. All right, Mrs. Melton?
This is the first reading of Ordinance 3085. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida vacating a portion of Third Street, Fifth Street, Jackson Street, as shown on the plat of South Braden Castle Camp addition to Manatee, F.L.A., recorded in Plaque Book Two, page 144 of the Public Records of Manatee County, Florida, being located generally east of 27th Street East and south of 11th Avenue East, providing for recordation in the official records, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The second reading is set for October 13th, but this does require a public hearing, correct?
Second reading.
Okay, so not for this reading? Okay. So no action needed?
Just, excuse me, just to confirm. So it was not advertised for today, for a hearing?
Well, it was advertised for today, but advertised.
It's the first reading.
Okay, all right.
So we don't need a motion to move it forward? Just, it will be heard on the second reading and public hearing.
It says public hearing right here.
Let's just open it up and do a public hearing.
Just to be safe. All right, we'll go ahead. Do, Mrs. Swart, you want to say something before we open it?
This will be quick and easy. It was addressed in the last case. I can show you exactly where the rights of way are to be vacated. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so there, there's three rights of way here that were on the original plat, and I'll show you that next. One, two, and three. There, in order to compile the entire parcel, it's necessary to vacate these three unused rights of way. We have public utilities agreement, the cities, as well as any potential utility that could use these. The original plat, you can see in context here.
Wow, that's a lot.
Two and three.
Tiny houses.
Braden Castle plat from over a hundred years ago, and they have not been used in that time.
Even Mr. Gallo wasn't here then. Neither was I.
We have detailed sketches and descriptions to go along with a final recording for this, and we will have the second reading on October 13th.
Okay, let me, thank you. Open up the, anyone wish to speak in the public hearing today? We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? And we will have the second reading and public hearing on October 13th, 2021. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. And so no further action needed on that today?
No action needed.
All right. And we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.
Mrs. Singer, thank you.
Something that never, has never happened to me.
You want me to read or do you read?
I can do it.
Oh, gosh.
Nothing. Ordinance 3083. This is the first reading and public hearing. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, adding a private property rights element to the city's comprehensive plan, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning. Robin Singer, Planning Committee Development Director. We're having a public hearing on this item because we have two comp plan amendments that will have to be transferred to the state following this meeting for a 45-day review period. So we thought it best to actually open a public hearing on this and, and get a decision on how you would like to proceed before we go through that transmittal process. The first ordinance in front of you is the implementation and creation of a new element to the comprehensive plan, which is a property rights element. This was decided by the state legislature under House Bill 59 in this last session and became effective July 1st. And it requires that all local governments amend their comprehensive plan to include a public, property rights element to their comprehensive plan prior to considering any other amendments to your comprehensive plan. So what kind of got us on the ball with considering this, this soon is the fact that you have the second item ordinance today also, which proposes an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So we can't process that one unless we've implemented this element. Staff has, is proposing to just take the language directly as proposed under the statutes. I recently attended a planning conference and found that in, in some of the sessions that a lot of communities are doing the same thing. They're just adopting this language verbatim as proposed under the statutes. And the language proposed, I'm just going to read it briefly just for, for the public input. The following right should be considered in local decision-making and, and want to point out, local decision-making, that's not just land use matters, that's local decision-making. Their comprehensive plan really has a broad scope of, of what it applies to. But the right of the property owner to physically possess and control his or her interest in the property, including easements, leases, or mineral rights. The right of a property owner to maintain, develop, and improve his or her property for personal use or the use of any other person subject to state law and local ordinances. The right of the property owner to privacy and to exclude others from the property to protect the owner's possessions and property. And the right of the property owner to dispose of his or her property through sale or gift. As you mentioned earlier with another item that you're familiar with, the Burt Harris Act, and, and so this is a property rights state that's strong in that conviction and, and has other things that back us. So I, I don't believe there's anything new here really that is going to have us looking differently at our, our land use amendments as we previously been considering them. I think we've always honored property rights here. So with that, the Planning Commission reviewed this at their August 18th meeting and voted unanimously, I think there was five members present, to recommend approval of this ordinance. So with that, you have any questions?
Mr. Roth?
This, this isn't, we really don't have anything to consider. This is a mandate, isn't it?
Yes, it is. I mean, I think, I think there are a few communities that might change some wording on it, but I don't know that anybody's tested that yet, and I'm not suggesting that we'd want to test it.
Anything else?
Do you need a motion?
Well, if we have to have a public hearing.
All right, anyone? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Here none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve ordinance number 3083, case number CP dot 21 dot 3158.
Second.
Second by Ms. Coker. Any further discussion?
And just to clarify for the record, it's being approved for transmittal to the state. We're going to get comments, probably not. We'll get it back and there will be an adoption hearing after 45 days.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Singer.
Sorry, I'm catching up. This is a first reading and public hearing for ordinance 3084. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending policy 1.2.1 of the future land use element of the city's comprehensive plan to revise the description of the urban central business district, future land use category to allow for the consideration of auto-oriented uses when authorized by city council, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Again, Robin Singer, Planning Committee Development Director. This is an ordinance for a comprehensive plan amendment that was generated by a private property owner. We were approached by someone who wishes to develop their property with a restaurant that has a drive-through facility, and that happens to be located in the urban core, or excuse me, urban commercial business district, urban central business district. And that's a land use designation. And so you can see in the, the dark teal here, this, this is the outline of that urban central business district under your future land use designation categories in the comprehensive plan. And so it does kind of stretch all the way from the creek and, and along Ninth Avenue. So it does have sort of a broad scope of area that it covers. So their proposal is to amend the comprehensive plan to essentially change the language to say that instead of auto-oriented uses such as gas stations, car washes, vehicle sales, auto repair, vehicle storage, and drive-throughs are prohibited, to say that they are prohibited unless specifically authorized and approved by city council pursuant to the provisions of the land use regulations. Now, we do happen to have, you know, land use regulations that would provide for certain auto-oriented uses through a special use permit process. However, in, in 2019, the language saying that these auto-oriented uses would be prohibited in this land use category was put in place, I believe, in, in furtherance of the goals and policies of comprehensive plan and also in furtherance of the downtown by design for the Bradenton CRA. And I believe several of you were part of that process in 2007, which was a public input process, and, and they determined that it wanted to become a more urbanized environment, more pedestrian-friendly, and employing those types of design concepts that would lend itself to a better redevelopment that, that furthers those policies of, of interconnectivity and pedestrian-oriented development. That would, led to the adoption of the form-based codes in 2011. And while they, they did not, the city did not change the land use regulations, they did seek to do a broader category of future land use designations, including urban village, urban core, and the urban central business district to preclude or prohibit those auto-oriented uses. Now, if this were to pass as proposed, I wanted to show you how that relates to what we have in terms of zoning categories in that urban central business district. So you'll see there's T6 and T5 in these areas. The broadest category, of course, is the T5. There's also some T4O in here and some mix of, of different zoning categories. And how that translates to the permitted and conditional uses within those zoning categories. Within the T5, which you saw was the broader category, there's a number of automotive-oriented uses that are listed as special use permits. So I think the idea was, you know, by prohibiting those types of uses, it kind of takes it out of, you know, your, your, the special use category, if you meet those criteria, essentially you're compelled to approve. And so rather than putting you through, you know, the city council through that decision-making process each and every time, we wanted to amortize those uses, essentially phase them out, and making them prohibited in the comprehensive plan was, I guess, the way they sought to do that. The way that it is written, these other types of automotive uses could be coming into it, so it's not just limited to drive-throughs. So staff's concern is, I mean, we think drive-throughs are a concern. You know, it's a, it's a traffic concern in a downtown area in particular where, and you, you've seen it with some of the ones that have been through a special use process and, and how that's kind of played out. And particularly as, as drive-throughs became more popular during the pandemic, and I think, you know, we appreciated that to some degree, but it also created additional traffic concerns on some of the major rights of way running through our downtown when traffic is backed out into an intersection. And you always want to anticipate for that, but sometimes it's hard to do. You just never know how popular an establishment is going to be and how it's going to impact your adjacent rights of way. So we're, we're not in favor. We are recommending denial on this. However, if, if you were to be inclined to approve, I think singling out drive-through facilities is something that could go through a public hearing process while still prohibiting the other types of automotive uses, I think would be beneficial to the community. And we haven't really gotten a lot of requests for the other types of automotive uses. And, and I think the continued support of the prohibition of those types of uses, I think it'll be, see long-term benefits in the downtown as we redevelop some of the areas to that. So with that, I am going to, I, I guess, ask for questions concerning these uses. Oh, and the Planning Commission agreed with the, the petitioner, and they, at their August 18th meeting, voted again unanimously to approve as proposed, so.
Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at our agenda. It says this is just a first reading, so this will be coming back to us again, or is...
Yes, it'll come back to you on second reading. However, because this gets transmitted to the state following first reading, and then there's a 45-day review period before it comes back for second reading, I thought it's beneficial to have the public hearing, and it was advertised as such, so that people could comment on it before we transmit it to the state.
And it, it is within our purview to, should the applicant agree to this, I guess? Because this is coming from another applicant, correct?
Yes.
That if, if we want to just address and deal with drive-throughs, that we would be able to do that and not entertain the service stations, the car washes? I mean, when I was growing up here, up and down that street, you had all sorts of service stations, all sorts of car repairs. There were brownfields, I'm certain, everywhere. And I don't necessarily want to see that come back up again. So if, if, if we were to look at this, we could say something where that, that the drive-throughs are prohibited unless specifically authorized or approved by the city council? We could, we could make that decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it is, is less than what was advertised, so it's...
So for clarification, we're talking about just this site or we're talking about all drive, all drive-throughs? all drive, all drive-throughs? Just in general, with the whole plan?
All, I think we're talking about all...
The opportunity to consider that.
Yeah.
Within this urban core business district, the dark teal area. So we are not considering it for the urban core, urban village, or any of the other districts where it's currently prohibited. So depending on what you decide, what's been advertised is just the urban central business district.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah. So I, I have a long history on this one. Prior to being elected, I served on the ear committee for the comprehensive plan, which we took, Betsy Benak, who before she was county commissioner, said, you know, as when I served on that committee, she said, "Our previous comp plan had the consistency of Swiss cheese." I mean, it was just so full of holes that we really had no protection whatsoever. So as we went through this, and then I worked with Mr. Polk, you know, on, on creating not only comp plan, but land use regs and urban villi, I'm sorry, the form-based codes, I can tell you that, that I feel that we did a really good job of the big picture, and we lost a lot of details. That's just my, my observation of what I wanted to do and where I wound up. Let's give you an example. In, in my neighborhood, where I, you know, prior to being elected, was trying to preserve an old neighborhood that had been, lost its, lost all of its integrity, and while I was looking at the big city, I didn't realize that Mr. Polk had extended urban village down in, and property, people, property rights were granted to people that they did not previously have. So it was, mistakes were made, many mistakes were made, in my opinion, on how we got into the details on this. So as we're moving forward, I know what the intention was on all these studies, downtown-by-design. I know what our intention was, but I feel that where we wound up is supposed to, you know, that there, there's going to need to be, in my opinion, maybe some exceptions. I know that, like, just exceptions that we did. We had to come in for the storage facility on the old Checker site, which was a hard to, hard-to-develop area. We did a special use on that. We did a major comp plan change for that. I know on, just recently, we had Jeremiah's Ice down on urban village, that, you know, once again, a bad corner, previously proposed, was going to be a special use for Wawa's, which was going to disastrous for that corner. So what we wound up with was something that was better than it could have gone. And so, and the one thing I agree with the applicant on this is to simply allow the city council members elected to be, by the residents of Bradenton, to make adjustments that's reasonable. That was supposed to be in form-based code. We spent a great deal of time talking about how that was going to be in, it didn't make it in there, and we didn't catch it. So all these things that have happened, you know, shame on me for not catching the details. So when, when, when Mr. Sanders is down there going over contracts, I don't fault him on that, because I wished I'd have done it closer when, before we got here. So looking into this, and the request, and where we're at, I don't see that a drive-through there is out of the norm of what's already there. I mean, it's, 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 it's just in, in the norm of what's already exists right now. So I just, now, can we, so we can specify that it's not auto-oriented and drive-through. Does that grant everyone drive-through, or is it still come back to a special use?
Still comes back to special use because of the zoning.
Okay, that's what, because, because, you know, as I said, form-based code was supposed to have that clause in there, that everything is, was adjustable by council decision, which did not get it in there. So I'm, I'm okay with going down to drive-through only and taking auto-oriented out of it.
Mr. Sanders?
And that's just for that location, not the whole?
The whole, that, that would be a special use permit for everything in the dark teal.
But still have to come back?
Still have to come back to town.
Yeah, which comes back to you as a special use permit. You're not approving a specific site.
You can spot, do this?
I'm sorry?
I don't understand. You can spot, you, you just, you...
Well, no, we're suggesting you're not...
You can prove one, deny another?
Right, right. Well, that's not spot zoning, but I want to say that for the record. But yeah, you can approve one and not another based on the particular circumstances. It's a case-by-case basis when you are in, are looking at special use permit.
Kind of like the boat ramps, or boat docks?
That I don't know. But yeah, you can, yeah. Well, yeah. I mean, for a special use permit for docks, yes, it is, it's a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you. Senator?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Bill Galvano. I'm here on behalf of VOT Partners LLC, and they are the owners of 101 Fifth Avenue Drive East, and they're the applicant. And here's what I would say to you. I think we're getting way ahead of ourselves in terms of what is being proposed. If you approve this request, you are not entitling my client's property, or any property in the district at hand, or anywhere in the city. All we are saying, and by the way, VOT Partners does not have a predetermined use for that property. There's been some exploration. This isn't because something's in the queue they're still continuing to explore. But in the process of that exploration, they realized that the bright-line language of the comprehensive plan prevented you all, this body, this council, from taking action if it, you, recognized that certain properties within the urban central business district could not meet the goals of the comprehensive plan, were never going to be pedestrian-friendly, were not, could never really be classified as primary downtown, that maybe were part of a general area that was sequestered by a major highway, or blocked by other of varying uses that were not what was envisioned when everybody, and I testified too when we were here, when we said, "Let's develop this downtown and have the plan." And I agree with Councilman Roth, that the idea is to just allow some flexibility. There is nothing that guarantees anybody any use grant, other than what's already established, if this passes. And I, and I understand this discussion about the drive-through, but if you're going to provide this flexibility, which I think is more reasonable when you get outside of the urban core and into the uniform central business district, then all you're doing is empowering yourselves. Yourselves, who are the ones who are elected by the people of Bradenton. And, and I don't see what's, what's wrong with that. I think that's a very positive step to take, and should have been taken some time ago, and it recognizes that, you know, times change, one size doesn't always fit all, and, and I respect the idea of phasing out auto uses and things like that, but the reality is, we, this was 2019, we have a Wawa that's not going anywhere. There's Kentucky Fried Chicken drive-through that's been there my whole lifetime. I don't foresee Starbucks starting to shut down. So a lot of the goals, notable, or laudable that they are, that are delineated in the visioning and the comprehensive plan, are truly not practical or economically feasible when applied on a case-by-case basis. And you, the elected body, should have the power to recognize that and make a decision if the case is made to you, such that you are convinced that it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Roth?
So, just, so, my thinking on this is, I'm looking at the staff report here, and auto-oriented uses. So this is, this is why I, I would like to call it, specify it out to, to drive-throughs, because I know that what we were trying to do, we were trying to eliminate, this is, this is what's, this is what's acceptable under auto-oriented. Gas stations, didn't want them. Car washes, didn't want them. Vehicle sales, did not want them. Auto repairs, did not want them. Vehicle storage, did not want them. And then drive-throughs. I didn't necessarily see that when this was being done as an auto-oriented business. I, I didn't consider the drive-through as an auto-oriented business. So I don't have problems with, with going back and calling that out, because it's just, it's just one of those unintended consequences that I got myself into on this, my involvement on this comp plan. So it's kind of where I'm at on this.
Mayor?
Barnaby? Yes, sir.
What I would say to that, and I understand, and I think you're, and follow your reasoning, but if you're going to provide flexibility, you might as well provide flexibility. And I speak with, from some experiences, I've watched what I would call auto-related uses develop and morph through time. I mean, a few years ago, we weren't looking at putting charging stations in certain areas of downtowns or cities within the state of Florida. Who would have heard of vending machines that are now come out from Carvana and things of that nature? I think if, if you're going to have a, the ability to come in and review, and you still have the absolute authority to say, "No, we don't like sales. We don't like gas stations. We don't want a downtown of, of, you know, contamination that needs to be, be addressed." You still have that absolute ability, and I think you probably would set a pretty quick precedence as the elected body in that regard. I, I would, would say that this exception, and I think you've answered the question, probably the best case that could be made is for a drive-through, but you would still want to have the, that whole exception, in my opinion, because you're just limiting your own authority, your own power, and by proxy, the, those who elected you, if you just keep narrowing and narrowing.
And my, my take on that would be, so I guess, the intent of doing the big picture is to create the, this, and, and I would say that this has all come out of it. The success of Bradenton has been from the planning that we've done, that you've done, that I've done, that we've got, we've all gotten here together, and now we're finding out bit by bit, piece by piece, the stuff that we didn't, we didn't foresee. By opening the door to auto-oriented, you're right, but we're, we're inviting the special use to come forward by, by calling it out. I don't, I don't see that the drive-throughs are as big a problem as the other ones that I, that I've just called out. So making an exception for that, and there will, there will be more that will come out. I mean, the second that we open the door, people will come through and say, you know, "I'd like a special use." So I'd rather keep the door closed on the ones that I know we don't want. I mean, it was, I'm, I didn't call this out. These were, these were groups that got together and said, "This is what we'd like to try to do, is get away from the old US 41, you know, 301, 14th Street, auto-oriented use, Ninth Street." We've, we've been trying to get rid of these auto-oriented businesses, because they just create, you know, blight. So to get there, I, I think there's a reason to, to keep the door closed on that type of, of activity, and then to be flexible on something for, for development purposes, on, on the idea of the drive-through. I, I feel that's giving.
Sure.
No, I understand.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if this council were to look at having a motion to approve the transmittal of, of an ordinance that would read what it has now, but add that drive-throughs were prohibited unless specifically oriented, or specifically authorized, you would not be happy with that?
Well, I think it would be, first of all, that you have prohibitive language now.
Right.
So anything is a step in the right, right direction. And again, all of this comes back to you. So I, I don't want to mischaracterize. What I would say is, the better course, from, from my view, is to allow the greater, the greater flexibility, since it is coming back, back to you.
Ms. Coker?
Thank you. I think that, while I was not sitting up here, I was involved with the form-based code and bringing that in, and part of the real impetus for it was so that developers and business could know what to expect. And I, I hate to put all of this at the whim of the five people up here that are sitting to make the decision. I, I definitely agree with Councilman Roth. I think that the drive-through doesn't necessarily, shouldn't, doesn't really, it's not really congruent with the other exclusions. So I would be okay with having the special use for the drive-through, but I'm not necessarily ready to say, "Oh, it's okay to have the other uses." And I like having a little bit of definitive to it, so the businesses know what to expect. There, it's not a, "Oh, well, let's go see if we can get this through." I, I'd rather keep that a little bit tight and, and somehow afford the ability to do the drive-throughs. That's my, that's just my feeling on it.
Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with you, Councilwoman, and I'm glad you stated that almost from both sides. So I agree that the drive-through doesn't seem to fall into the same hole that the others. So I would definitely go for calling that out.
All right, any other questions? I just have one comment from the standpoint of, and I, and again, I've always said this in the few months I've been up here, that I always still look at as a councilperson, what would, is the best for our citizens, if I did have a vote on it. But, but from the standpoint of, give an opportunity for a council to make a decision, and, you know, again, it's not the right of this council to say what another council will do, and it's also, we don't want us to stifle that council, because things change. Obviously, what we all were thinking 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 50 years ago, has changed in a community. So I like opportunity to give that council at the time a chance to kind of go with what's happening at that time. So, you know, just food for thought for me, that, you know, the more opportunity, and again, I'm not disagreeing with what probably anything that was said today. We don't want a big car lot downtown, maybe, like it used to be in that area. But, but again, 25 years from now, might be a better opportunity for something to be there that would benefit the city, you know? So that gives people opportunity, and again, right now, I don't believe there's anything, I don't think they're going to come back in a month if a car lot could be there and ask for it, but, but, you know, it's an opportunity to let the city grow, and that's, I think, what we're up here to do. Public safety and let the city thrive, you know, would be some things. So just a comment, so, thank you. Anything else for Senator Galvano? All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
So at this point, Mr. Rudisow, we need to open up the public hearing. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby?
At this point, I'd like to offer a motion, and we'll see if, if I get a second to it, and we'll see what the applicant says of my motion. So my motion would be to approve the transmittal of ordinance 3084 on first reading, to amend the comprehensive plan future land use policy 1 dot 2 dot 1, to read as follows. Auto-oriented uses such as gas stations, car washes, vehicle sales, auto repair, vehicle storage are prohibited, and then add this language. Drive-throughs are prohibited unless specifically authorized and approved by the city council pursuant to the provisions of the land use regulations.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Is discussion?
I, and again, I'm interested in knowing if the applicant is in agreement with this, because it looks like, I've got a motion, now I have a second, and we're in discussion.
Yes, and thank you for your motion. The, my client is not here, so what I would ask is if we can transmit it as written, with the understanding that I would revisit with the principal... the understanding that I would revisit with the principal of my client and see if we are, can agree to that amendment to our application before it's approved.
Well, I mean, Mr. Rudisell, Ms. Singer, where does that leave us right now?
So, what he's asking, because this is, again, this is another scenario where we're going to transmit this language to the state. They're not going to have any comments on this. It's going to come back. And so, ultimately, this council will, again, get to decide whether or not to ultimately adopt this language. And I think what the applicant is asking is, rather than trying to modify the language now, can we submit it as is with the understanding that council has given direction that it's not likely to be approved in its current format and that they would work with staff between now and when it comes back for adoption to modify the language?
Well, the maker of the motion, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that.
But you're saying it will come back to the council before the final approval?
That's correct.
It can be amended, once it talks to his client, it can be amended at that time or denied if it doesn't meet their standards.
Last question. So, if we were to transmit it the way it is, and then we decide to go back to what Ms. Barnaby has recommended, would it have to go back to the state again?
No.
Okay.
It can be adjusted at that time. Mr. Roth?
So, I guess your proposal is just a process to keep going, but you've heard...
Yeah, I think I can read panels pretty well.
Yeah.
So, I know where you all are in your minds and in your debates. I, as a fiduciary of my client, cannot, before you agree to something, without consulting the principal.
But they do, does realize that if his client says no, then there's probably going to be a no vote up here, so it's a mute point. So, whatever we transmit today can be changed.
I want to make sure.
That's what Mr. Rudisell is...
We have our planning director standing here.
Yes.
Perhaps a better course of action would be to continue.
Okay.
Because then he can get the read from his client, come back at another hearing, and they can speak at that hearing prior to transmitting it.
But did we not want to transmit it with the other one?
We don't have to transmit, the other one has to be transmitted first, in any case. It has to be adopted first. So, we can transmit that one. There's no limit on how many we can be sending through, so...
Well, if that is the case, then I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll allow someone to make another motion if the second agrees.
Yes, yes. Before you withdraw, hold on a minute.
Okay, all right.
Again, these, the process that we're engaged in is a lengthy process. This, you know, goes to state, it's a 45-day review. We wouldn't even get back to the council until November. Again, I would just urge that we transmit as is. I understand where you all are, and I understand, Councilwoman Barnaby, what your motion is, and I just cannot make a representation here this morning.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so I, so, so you can figure out how I got here. It was that when I first saw this, you know, it caught out auto-oriented business, you know, recommended motion, recommended motion is to deny. That's where I was heading, prior to looking into this in greater detail and seeing that there's actually, in my opinion, two call-outs on this. The one that I know that, you know, everything that I've been taught going forward on this, that we wanted to try to get auto-oriented businesses out of the core city. That was our goal, and I don't think, I really realized that drive-throughs were, you know, lumped in there. I just didn't ever consider them to be that. So, moving forward, I think I understand where you're trying to do, is just keep this moving forward. But you've heard that, I think I counted four votes to not go with auto-oriented, so, you know, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Hold on, we still have Mrs. Barnaby. She had officially been pulled.
Okay, but that's what, my thinking has changed on this, from deny to okay with exception.
Well, my...
So, Ms. Barnaby?
My concern is, again, if you open it up to everything, and then...
It's not being opened. It's the first reading.
I understand that, but it's a transmittal, and it's going to go to the state, and it comes back to the state without any comments. And then, in the meantime, somebody is wanting to look at developing something, and so they go out on a limb and buy some property, thinking that we're going to continue to, or we're going to change and allow these other uses that we absolutely have said we don't want. I just, tell me if I'm looking too far down the road and causing a problem I don't need to be causing.
Mr. Rudisell? So, that's the question, is if it transmits now, the state has no comment, it comes back to this council, right after that is, and Mrs. Barnaby makes the exact same motion she just made, and the applicant says yes, then that's how it becomes in our ordinance, right?
Yeah, let me touch on a couple of things that were said. So, there's no legal effect to the transmittal. I understand your concern about maybe people would see that, and they might think that that's coming, but from a legal standpoint, it has no effect until it comes back and is adopted by the council. So, and as far as changing it, I don't see any issues. The state's review at this point is very limited. It has to be issues that impact a state resource. I don't think this language they're going to care about regardless of the initial language or a modified version. And it will be, if anything, it would be reduced in scope from what's being transmitted. So, I don't have any problem with the concept of modifying it after the transmittal.
Mrs. Coker?
Okay, so if I'm reading the room right, maybe the most important thing is to get something transmitted. So, if we were to transmit as is proposed at the moment, and we could always, if further information came forward that would cause us to want to include all of it, we could add that later.
Is that correct, Mr. Rudisell?
If they, we want to transmit it like this and then...
If additional information came, then we could transmit it as he has proposed it. But for right now, we will transmit it as she has said.
Well, let me hit on that. This is a privately initiated text amendment. So, the applicant has the right to have their language voted on by the council. We can't, or I would not recommend that we make a motion to amend the language that they have presented without their consent.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I understand. So, basically, the process is started with the verbiage that we have, and that for the sake of keeping the motion moving, you'd like to keep the verbiage on there, even though you've heard that the votes that you would need would be for drive-through, that we would move forward with the verbiage, with the understanding that's not going to pass, but it allows you to keep moving forward on the comp plan changes at the state level. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think you're describing it accurately. You haven't taken a vote, but like I said, I can read a panel, and I can tell you what discussion I'm going to have.
Still, the opportunity, Ms. Barnaby, is at the next meeting that we would have after this, that would be for this process, you could make your exact same motion, and if they agreed to it, that's what becomes an ordinance.
And we can revisit with staff in the meantime, and it may be a very simple process.
Well, then I will withdraw my motion, and if Mr. Sanders will withdraw a second, and then I will allow a clean motion to be brought forward in the manner that has been described, seems to...
Okay.
All right, so she's withdrawing her motion, so...
Well, if I withdraw it, Mr. Sanders kind of has to withdraw a second.
She's done, there's no motion.
What's it going to cost you?
Mr. Roth, okay, so the motion has been withdrawn.
Yes.
All we need to do? Yep. Mr. Roth?
Okay, so I'll just change one word in the recommended motion. Move to approve Ordinance 3084 Comprehensive Plan Amendment CP dot 21 dot 2795.
And again, just to clarify, that's for transmittal?
Just for transmittal purposes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward 2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving forward.
Next, we have Resolution 21 dash 64, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton amending the city's rate and fee structure for city water sewer and reclaimed water charges by increasing such fees and providing for an effective date.
Mr. McCollum?
I thought you pulled that.
I thought we pulled that.
Only pulled garbage.
I thought we pulled them both.
No, it's both, yeah, okay. Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Ms. McCollum will take the lead on it, but just for purposes of clarification from the council, this is related specifically to the water service rate increase, and there's a corresponding piece of legislation that comes afterwards that is fee-based, which deals with the sewer component as well. What I did withdraw was the garbage, the sanitation component. The short version on this, and Jim can get into the details and questions, but it really covers inflationary cost increases, and it's a 2%. It's based on the CPI increases. Frankly, I don't see a 2% CPI coming for the next several years, and I don't even think this covers our cost increases, just so you know. Jim can talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you.
Yes. Good morning, Jim McCollum, Director of Public Works and Utilities. By ordinance, we are allowed annually to seek a rate increase that is commensurate with the CPIU. The current CPIU is in the order of about 5%. We are not asking for 5%. We're asking for a 2% rate increase to cover the operational costs associated with the water and sewer departments. So, this, to be clear, this is water and sewer increases related, and reclaimed increases. So, you're also aware, the Water and Sewer Fund, this is the 402 Fund, that also fully funds the utility billing department. Even though they're not under our purview, we fund their operations through this, through these funds. The 2%, to give you an idea, represents for a 3/4-inch service, the minimum charge would go up $0.59 for water and $0.86 a month for sewer, for a total of $1.45. For a 1-inch service, it would be 31, excuse me, that's for a 1-inch service. For a 3/4-inch service, it is $0.31 for water and $0.47 for sewer, or about $0.78 per month increase that we're seeking. And this is defined, also to recognize, our department is one of the heavier electrical users within the department, within the city, as it relates to the operation of both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plants. And with FPL's significant increase this year, we're looking at about $184,000 increase in electrical cost that is part of this increase. This rate increase will generate, our projections are, we would generate an additional $201,000 on the water side and then an additional $223,000 on the sewer side, a total of $431,511 between the two funds.
Last year, you, we approved 4%?
I believe so, yes, I mean...
And I tried to block that and say, "So, this year, you're wanting 2%, 2-point-whatever." Whatever, what does it say? It's 2-point what?
It's 2%.
2%. All right. So, much better.
Mr. Roth?
So, Jim, you called out the difference between 3/4 and 1-inch water feeds being $0.78 per month and $1.45 a month. Just out of curiosity, I know I'm in an older neighborhood, I got a 3/4-inch water feed. How does the city break down? How many are like me, or do most people have 1-inch water? Is it age-related?
Probably about half and half, because most of the newer developments are getting the 1-inch, because there's additional water usage requirements associated with bathrooms and pressure. The 1-inch service provides a lower pressure loss going into the houses, and we operate as one pressure zone from east to west. All the water tanks operate at the same level. We have one pressure zone. When all the tanks are full, we can get about 55 pounds of pressure. If they're down at their lower levels, we're in the 43 to 44 pounds of pressure. And we're regulated to have to require to provide 20 PSI of pressure at a house.
So, are you saying that 3/4 has higher pressure than 1-inch?
No, it would potentially have more pressure loss if you tried to put more flow through a smaller pipe.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Chair, we entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 2164.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Melton?
Resolution 21 dash 66, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton amending the city's rate and fee structure for city stormwater utility charges by increasing such fees and providing for an effective date.
Mr. McCollum?
Again, Jim McCollum, Director of Public Works and Utilities. We are seeking a commensurate 2% rate increase on our stormwater utility fee. To give you an indication, residential customers will see an additional $0.10 per month as part of this 2%. It will generate a total revenue, additional revenue of just under $43,000, again, intended to cover additional costs associated with operations, one of the larger items that we're purchasing in the drainage department, because again, this 430 Fund fully funds our drainage division, which is about 10 employees. But as part of our capital equipment purchases for next year, we are purchasing a $500,000 plus new VAC truck for cleaning storm sewers and cleaning out catch basins. And our existing unit is, it's lived its life.
What did you say the price of that was?
$520,000.
How is $43,000 going to pay for that?
$43,000 isn't paying for it all. It's contributing to the additional cost, because we had equipment cost in last year's budget. The additional cost of the VAC truck on top of what we paid last year is in this range.
I have motion approved Resolution 21 dash 66.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Sanders, second by Mrs. Coachman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, we have an ordinance, and obviously Scott Christensen is not here. Go ahead, Mrs. Melton.
This is the first reading for Ordinance 3088, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part 1 Charter and Related Laws, Subpart B Related Laws, Article 3 Firefighters Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Section 8 Disability Providing for Codification, Providing for Separability of Provisions, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Herewith and Providing an Effective Date. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for October 13th.
Okay, so, we will have that reading and move it forward to October 13th. No other action on that, Mr. Rudisell?
Yes, sir.
Make sure. All right, moving on to new business. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before, in item number 7, before Council's Resolution Number 2163, which is a resolution to City Council, which would propose the adoption of a social media policy for the use of social media for city business and provide an effective date, the handout that was provided to Council outlines what that policy would be. The short version on this, Mr. Mayor, Council, is that in today's modern world, of course, social media is a very robust and generally accepted and utilized form of communications, and we are trying to catch up a little bit and provide some rules for guidance and purpose and processes related thereto. The... The Bradenton Police Department does a really good job with their social media, a lot of departments do, and from the perspective of the overall city itself, what we're trying to do is to utilize the same types of, of community outreach, basically. And if you look at the resolution itself, it basically provides for the public complete, consistent, accurate, relevant, and timely information about city programs, services, projects, events, and topical issues. As we move into the policy as attached to the resolution, you'll see that it provides guidelines, procedures, limitations, and responsibilities for usage of the city's managed social media platforms. It mentions within the scope a content manager. And I think that whenever you're talking about any sort of dissemination of information, it's the content that becomes somewhat arguable. And we don't want to be in a situation where we are becoming the arbiter of what is content, that's good content opposed to bad content. But at the same time, there are clear rules regarding improper content, things that are threatening, violence, insurrection, whatever it might be. And obviously, the rules that apply to libel and slander and harassment. So when you move down to procedures, basically, it does give the city administrator authority for enforcement of the policy, and as well as, as the communications coordinator or designee serving as a digital media coordinator. And that's important, because really, that digital media coordinator becomes somewhat of the enforcer of this policy. And when it relates to, well, what would that person enforce? They're responsible for, again, the content, the quality of the city's managed social media content, and really removing speech that would be prohibited, as I've pointed out. When you get down to the more touchy things about prohibitions are things that basically could be political, not political, sensitive, unsensitive, for different considerations and the like. And we want to try to get out of that business. The last thing in the world we want to do is be the arbiter of sensitive or controversial information. And so we try to do that in some of these provisions that are provided within the policy itself, as it specifically relates to Content Criteria, subsection D. I'd point your attention to, when we get down to sub nine about the user may not use threatening, defamatory, slanderous, obscene speech, libelous, unlawful speech, and the like, those are some of the things I said were clear, bright-line type of designation. And then, within subsection 10, contents posted to the city-managed social media platform shall not contain, particularly under the last one, and these are unnumbered bullet points, contents in support of or opposition of political campaigns or ballot measures. That would be improper use, for sure, by a variety of different standards. And we don't want to get into that in any way, shape, or form. Under subsection 11, being the objectives of the city to promote public safety, provide public information, and the like, that particularly under unnumbered bullet point three, all information shared or posted will reflect the policy, position, and point of view of the City of Bradenton as an agency or an organization, and not that of any individual associated with the city. Now, that's kind of a, you know, a good basis on what the purpose of the, of the social media usage is, to represent the views and information of the organization. At the same time, we know the organization, as it relates to its governance, is controlled by elected officials, and some fine ones up here on the dais. And for purposes of political-type speech or opinions related to political issues, those would typically be controlled by the elected official's own individual platforms. And so I think it's important to recognize that distinction. And that's what we try to do in here, not contain campaign information or materials related to an individual. That's about it. I think we could probably have interesting debates about the whole First Amendment aspects and the political connections and things like that, for sure. But I think you'll find that this policy, in our research of it, is, it meets current community standards as it relates to social media limitations for government agencies. With that, I'd stand for questions.
Mr. Roth?
Thank you. I don't have any problem with this at all, but I was looking, just looking through the text of it, on page five, section 10, bullet point two, and it says, basically, all these shall not contain, bullet point two, "An expression of attention to inflict evil, injury, and damage." It's a subjective word, isn't it?
I think, you know, it certainly could be.
I mean, is there a legal definition to it? I mean, because I would think we should leave that word out, because some people would say, you know, a broad spectrum of things is evil, where another person would say it's not.
That's absolutely a fair comment. You know, injury or damage, is there a legal definition?
No, I have no problem with injury.
It's evil, more specifically.
It's evil.
Right, right.
You know, it's just, that's.
Yeah.
My evil might not be your evil.
I don't, I can't disagree with you. And we would accept any kind of amendment to that.
Anyone else?
I'd like to hear from our chief police, how they do it, because I watch it, follow it, and I think it's a good, I think she has good input. I know you've been talking to her, I'm sure about this. I mean, it's clearly not political, you know, this, people up here should just kind of stay out of it. It should be informational purposes only, and you do a good job at it, and so it's not your opinions or your officer's opinions, it's like just public information. That's fluid, that's always going on. There's an accident over at Sixth and whatever, and, you know, we can say, oh, yeah, the trash pickup, we're, you know, we're picking it up this week, not next week, or whatever, you know, that stuff like that.
Right, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Perry, but I believe what we've come up with as the discussions is that it's going to be a multi-party unit contributing to the city's website. You know that we have a pretty robust program. Emily, Chief Kramer, helps shepherd that. She's going to be involved with postings, because we get things a little more, well, real-time. Chelsea with Public Works has come over and done some training. I think they're going to work with Jeannie. We're going to try not to, you know, the redundancy, we don't want to see that happen, but really just capitalize, and we do a little bit for you all now, when we see things that you all are at. For example, it just so happened that my social media person was at the ballgame last night and captured a picture of one of our council people singing. And so I said, whoa, wouldn't that be a great first week on our Facebook page? And so I believe Mr. Perry's direction is that we're all going to work together, there's no new positions here, there may be some opportunities for growth within those positions. And we do. I actually presented to some city managers and public safety folks a couple months ago out west on the benefits of social media within city and public safety, and got a lot of interest afterwards. We, we've kind of figured out when to do it, what not to do, how to do it, what medians to use, depending on what group you want to attract. So I think we're ready. I think as long as you guys give us a go-switch, we even have a Facebook page ready to go, and we're looking forward to helping whatever, whichever way we can.
The only thing I disagree with you on is I'd like to keep everybody on this side of the bench out of it, you know. I know Mrs. Barnaby sings very well. I didn't stay for the presentation, but it can, it just keep politics out of it, because then somebody, I'll use myself, might be trying to create an opportunity to get on Facebook. And I just think you need to keep us out of it. And I'll be the one to say this, I just soon not have anything put out there about me, good or bad, obviously bad, but, I mean, I just soon say, no elected officials should use this for, in a platform.
Well, Mr. Perry might want to comment, but I'm going to get my two cents in first, then I'm not sure why we're doing this. Because what we're trying to do right here is give a face to the City of Bradenton. By giving a face, you actually have to do faces. So I think the thought is, and we're pretty well-versed in trying to keep things not political, I mean, we've been doing this now for five years, I think them seeing a council person at a game singing, that really gives a face to the city. I don't know that we would do that if it's at a, we wouldn't do it if it was at a political event, but ribbon cuttings where I have four council people present, that is exactly, I believe what we're really trying to accomplish is it's brand the city in a way differently than a PDF newsletter that goes out to a limited amount of folks. What we're trying to do is gain followers and users, and so then, when there is an important safety message that doesn't get covered with us, such as Public Works sanitation issues, what have you, you've got a lot of people tuning in, because you're posting regularly, it's public interest stuff, and it's showing what our folks do. I understand what you're saying, it's not going to be a platform for politics, but I think, I think you guys will just have to trust that the staff will understand the difference between those two. And we want to highlight the fact that you guys get out there and do things in meetings, and this morning, that this was a great thing, that could have gone on our page, this could have gone on your page, because a lot of you all support some of those initiatives. That's my two cents, it's not my argument, I'll leave it to you all, though.
And just Mayor, on that point, I agree with the chief, and I also agree with Councilman Sanders. When we dealt with this in my prior position, it's hard to reach a compromise as it relates to what might be beneficial from some abstract political kind of angle. And the reality is, what the chief said, is that, that you folks are the city leaders, and there's nothing wrong with associating and highlighting the good things that each and every one of you have done with our employees, with our community. At the same time, when elections come up, I think it becomes more political, we had a cooling-off period, a blackout period, basically. And so city councilors could not be featured in any social media. I think it was 120 days before an election, about four months, and they couldn't do anything on the gov-TV channels about their programs and the like. We thought about that a little bit, but where we are right now, we'd like to proceed with the policy, and should it come up that that becomes an issue, perhaps we would revisit that. But I think the chief did a really good job of pointing out what we're trying to do, how we want to do it, and the benefit to the public and the city.
All right, so you're opening the door for, I think it's the wrong thing, I'll be quite honest with you, and I'm adamant about it, because I just don't think that that's a tool that should be abused, and so how are you going to offer equal time?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I don't think it's necessarily, I agree that it shouldn't be, you know, it's a tool that shouldn't be abused and the like, I don't think it's an equal time type of thing.
Sure it is.
I think it's a wrong position, I respectfully have to disagree with that.
You're welcome to do that.
And I'd also say that, you know, I think if we're doing it right, then everybody should get, basically, their efforts and the city's efforts, which is paramount, highlighted. And what we're doing, the information that's important to the city. Some people may become more active and say, can you get me, you know, I'm doing this, I'd like this to be highlighted. And I think we have to be sensitive to making sure that there's a balance of that. And at some level, that, you know, no matter what, I guess if it's, if it's a newsletter, it could be argued the same thing, or a whole host of, anytime someone speaks on behalf of the city, I didn't get a fair shake.
Well, we've already had issues with this newsletter, and why would we continue down that same path?
Well, I think, why? Because I think that there's a balance whereby there has to be public dissemination of information.
I'm not going to debate it, I'm just.
The argument that you respectfully submit is that it has to be, you know, all or none, and preferably none. Well, how are we doing our jobs then, would be my question, you know, poised back to council. We have to disseminate information, and if it's people's interpretation of whether that information becomes a little bit too slandered or not, we want to keep that balance, and beauty is in the eye of the beholder as it relates to answering that question. I don't think it will become a problem, but I absolutely respect your position on it.
Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand where Councilman Sanders is coming from, but what I think the purpose of being a part of more of a networking thing than email is that, that's all we hear, is we want to hear from you, we want communication, you know, we want to be, feel connected, and this is one way to do so. So it humanizes us, I mean, that, I think that's a good thing. But I trust that the policies would govern, that you would not see any kind of slanting or campaigning. It's just, it's just getting information out and, to some degree, socializing with the public.
I'm ready to make a motion. You want a motion?
Go ahead and make it, we can continue discussion. Mr. Coker?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2163.
Second.
All right, Mr. Roth? We have a motion this second?
Yeah, okay, so I understand Mr. Sanders' point on this, and I'd say that because probably in the past, we've seen people abuse their privileges, so, but I would hope that as we're heading down this new road, this new path, that that's not going to happen anymore. I mean, I'll always remember that two mayors ago, there was the, that he would send out, Bill Evers would send out the quarterly Bill Evers News.
Mr. Roth, I want to say something just funny-wise.
Yeah.
Tell who people, the people in the audience who Bill Evers is, because most people today don't know who Bill Evers is.
Two mayors ago. Two mayors ago. And as a taxpayer and a citizen, I would get the quarterly newspaper about the greatness of, you know, the Bill Evers administration. And it did, it never did look right. But, you know, I mean, what did I know back then? But anyway, yes, I can understand how someone would, you know, the wrong person might, you know, want to abuse his privilege, but I would hope we're beyond that at this point.
And I'm going to make a comment to that, because, and I, again, you and I have been up here the longest together now.
Yeah.
And in all of my time, now in this new position, have you seen any underhanded things and things with that? I mean, there's not. So, I mean, and that's something that, that in this community, and that's, I had nothing to do with writing this. Mr. Perry did that all on his own.
Yeah.
So, you know, I thought we needed something, but, you know, I mean, don't, just because things have happened in the past, don't think they're happening in the future, and we're working together, so.
Well, I can tell you back when I, one of the first couple of campaign training sessions that I used to go to in Washington, when Barack Obama had used social media for such success, we were told as inspiring, you know, persons who are learning how to campaign, we were cautioned, at first we were encouraged, this is the wild, wild west, and by the time I went a couple years later, we were like, you really need to watch this, you know, this is a very dangerous avenue you're headed, that you could potentially go down, you could get into great trouble. About the same time that a man named Congressman Anthony Weiner got himself in trouble.
Mrs. Barnaby on that.
Who had an unfortunate name. Yes, I too remember the reports to the people. I asked at that time to have counsel be included in that, we were told we would not be, and then at the next budget cycle is when we got the money to tape these meetings and show these meetings, because that's, that's how that came about. This is a tool. A tool is as good as, and can be used for many things, and it's only as good as the intent of the person using it. You can use a hammer to build a house, you can use a hammer to take somebody out of existence. So I'm in support of this, I think it's good to have some guidelines and a policy in place so that there's direction given. I know the intent of it, and of course, it's always in the, you know, some people say the devil's in the details, and I am paid, said God is in the details. So, Mr. Perry, it's going to be up to you to make sure that this is handled appropriately as the tool that it's designed to be.
And, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Barnaby, all councilors, I intend to do that quite fairly and unfavorably, without favor.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Next matter on the agenda, Mayor, is the Comprehensive Risk Assessment Proposal. I just wanted to talk about that a little bit, which is, I'd spoken with some councilors here or there about the possibility, when I came in trying to do a review for purposes of measuring where we were at with financial controls. of measuring where we were at with financial controls, basically. Financial control is a little bit broader, too, as it relates to potential material weaknesses, maybe even some deficiencies in, in process with finance and things like that. And so typically, the external audit that everyone's familiar with is done, of course, once a year, the CAFR, the consolidated financial report, that has to be submitted to the state. And that's within the purview of a third party outside CPA auditing firm that's familiar with the rules of auditing government agencies and the like. I wanted something a little bit deeper. I wanted an internal audit, and I'd spoken with some folks locally in the CPA community about how that's typically done for a new incoming administrator, change of administration, whatever it might be. And I was asked some pretty poignant questions about what had our internal audit function had been, and, and cybersecurity, and a whole host of other things that came to light that we needed to kind of beef things up. An analogy to me was a, a, a military base commander that would take over a military installation doesn't really take it over until there's an agreement that this was the condition of it when, when the older incumbent left and, and the new candidate came in. So a certification, basically, an agreement of baseline, and a sign, and a sign off for the, the base being in, in good health, and recognizing those things where there might be some weaknesses in the health. So the purpose of this assessment is to do that. And I, I, I've spoken with some folks in the, the government auditing, internal risk assessment, the finance area, and I've been able to basically obtain a, a proposal that I'm going to be putting forth to council. It's about, I think, about $24,000, $25,000. And I, I think it's beneficial to make that investment, basically, to give us some review of what's there, as well as suggestions for going forward. And it'll be an adjunct, basically, to our external audit, as well as the internal reviews that being conducted by our finance people and the like.
Mr. Sanders?
Do we have anything internally right now? I'm not aware of anything.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sanders, we don't.
Okay, all right. So, misstatement, I'm sorry. I didn't think we had anything. And your experience in other cities, do they have internal audit?
Yeah, most of the cities have internal audit departments, basically.
Right.
Yeah, mayor and, and counselor, but most cities have an internal audit function, or they, they contract that service, but clearly.
You can't, it's best to have it in-house, isn't it? Well, maybe not. Yeah, it depends.
I, I like having a, a completely independent set of eyes.
Yeah.
Because the, the argument can always made, when you have it in-house, who, who does that function report to? Can it be, can it be in any way biased and the like? That, that becomes a problem.
But I've always had an internal audit and worked with them closely, and people don't like internal audit, audits, because they're not, they're kind of mean spirited, you know?
They can be.
And they're, and they're, and they're just factual. You know, if it's two and two is four, it'll always be four. And so I'm, I want this, I like this, I think it's a great idea, and have it external. But how would an external work? Because, you know, sometimes you have to, you, you have to investigate or look at the situation as it comes up, so how would that work?
If you, Mayor and Counselor Sanders, if you could just clarify that question a little bit, I apologize.
Well, let's, let's say, let's say you're going to audit the water billing, that makes sure that we're getting billed, like Braden Castle did not get billed for 10 years. I mean, that's, to me, that's, we, we've, we, we cost us a lot of money, but we could have paid for an internal audit just on that one deal.
That's a great example, and I, I absolutely agree with you, you know. I don't know how deep a dive they go into each department. Typically, internal audit has an audit plan, and they're three or four-year plans where they're going to audit different components of the financial controls and reviews, if you have an internal audit department or an internal audit plan. I'd imagine one thing coming out of this particular study will be the recommendation that we put together an internal audit plan.
Right.
And make a commitment of whatever those finances might be, to do several audits of very, you know, of, of four or five components with a deeper dive there, too, particularly those that handle finances, cash flows, and things like that.
Right. We, we had an internal audits on every department, every year, and, but is that the direction of, say, the administrators, say, I want you to look at this, I want you to look at expense accounts, I want you to look at.
That's, that's absolutely right. Those are the kinds of things.
All, all those things, especially big, and, and you never have it the same, because if you do, your department is looking for it, says, oh, they always audit this.
Absolutely.
You got, it, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's kind of a trickery thing, it's.
Right. But, but, but Mayor and Counselor, it's an excellent point you're making, Counselor, to the extent that they don't have it the same, but they always go back to make sure that their recommendations and that you fix the problem. And they'll do sample testing related to it, so that's usually a pretty beneficial.
And sometimes multiple audits, if they discover something that's really at, I mean, I, I was involved in that, and I, I found like a $600,000 embezzlement. And the, the, the owner of the company says, oh, that guy would never do this. Well, he did, so here we are.
And particularly trying to identify those areas where there's more weakness and opportunity for types of mis, misapplication and, and misappropriation. Credit cards, P cards, things like that.
Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, can you just help me a little bit with how this compares with that audit, the annual audit that we get?
Sure, and, and that's a great question. I, I think the, the external audit typically looks at your financial statements. It's the consolidated financial report, annual reports, called a CAFR, consolidated annual financial report. They call it the CAFR in New Mexico, they call it the CAFR in Florida. Has to be submitted to the, to the state, and usually it's the auditor's office, or the examiner's office, or whoever it might be. But that actually looks at whether we're treating, i- it does look at some financial controls, don't, don't misunderstand me, but the, the crux of it, and the gravamen, is whether we're applying our, our government accounting standards properly to our financial statements. They look at the way Tom Kelly has put together the balance sheets and the working capital and, and things like that, and that's really what they're trying to do. And they do test certain transactions to make sure that in practice, what's happening is the same thing that you're reporting. But that's generally attesting to the accuracy of your financial statements. That's what they want to know about. Is this a government who's put out these documents that are transparent to the public and the state overseers and the like, that meet financial standards, GASP, Government Accounting Standards Bureau standards?
Well, can I follow up on that?
Sure, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so is, is some of the work actually being duplicated? I mean, should we be using the same firm that does our annual audit, or is it better to have a different one?
Great question. Actually, most accountants will tell you, you can't. That would like be having one attorney that's the same member of a firm reviewing another attorney's work in the same firm. And so the people that do your internal audits should never be the same people that do your external audits.
Makes sense. All right, and nine months ago, when I became mayor, I brought this up to our current administration, knowing that they were leaving, and I didn't, I would have asked for that early on, because basically, when you come into a place, you own it after a certain number of months. Knowing that they were leaving, and Mr. Perry and I had a conversation early on, especially with, there was a several-week lap over where we didn't have anybody, I wanted the transparency to be there from when, basically, I was signing checks, and money was being transferred to make payroll. And, I mean, we have a great staff, and I trust them all, but I think it looks better for all of us if this comes out clean, and Mr. Perry will own it when this is done. So if there's anything down the road, we can hold him accountable, as well as nobody can say, well, you did something wrong accidentally or purposely. And also find if there is that embezzlement that happens, because it, it happened around here many years ago with another government office, unfortunately, and the person's still in jail.
And I just want to clarify the record, Mr. Mayor. The attrition to this, the attribution, I should say, goes to the mayor bringing it to my attention. He, this, this, the seed was planted by the mayor, and, and kudos to him for doing it. I thought it was very wise, yep.
And I'm surprised you didn't say, I'm not coming in here until this is done, because, like I said, after a certain period of time, you own it.
Yes, sir.
Especially if you didn't call it out, and you get so busy, it's like, man, I forgot that. You, you just want to CYA, right?
Correct.
So, do we?
No, we don't need any official action right now. We're looking at that contract probably as a, as a piggyback, quite honestly, because the people do some work in other government entities, not, not, not locally, I don't believe. They might do the school board either, or did.
But you'll need approval for the, to, to, to write the check, right?
We may have to take it for official action through the, through the procurement process as a piggyback contract. It's, it's under $25,000, but I'll be talking with, with purchasing about that, Tammy. I wanted to be safe and sorry on that.
Same as why.
Okay, so he'll bring that back once you get any more information.
If he needs to.
Yep, all right. Moving forward, Mr. Perry?
City center space study?
If, if we could move to Resolution 2169, perhaps.
Okay.
Which is, which is the approval of the, of the org chart, basically.
Sure.
Right. And, a- a- as council knows, in, throughout the budget process and my first couple of months on the job, as well as, I guess, my initial hiring process, I discussed having proper alignments, and we obviously had had an alignment, particularly in the executive management administration, where there was, of course, the treasurer, city clerk, and we don't have that model anymore. We still have the city administrator, myself is the, as the successor to Mr. Callahan. But I needed to address that, basically, and I think that org chart does a pretty good job of trying to delineate the various components of that as it relates to the city clerk, and, and Ms. Melton has done a great job, I think everybody would agree with that, and, and certainly is a capable and competent individual in that regard, both in the interim and I would respectfully submit going forward. That being said, the administrator's office, how do I bring efficiency to that? My budget did include the, the proposal for assistant city administrator. I don't, I don't know when I'm going to, to go in that direction, and quite frankly, I might come back to you six months and say, I think I can maybe handle it without, without that position, but I do appreciate the indulgence and the support that council has given me in that regard. The other components are certainly necessary with the policies, practice, procedures type of individual, and, and Ms. Fortin has done a really good job in, in supporting me and drilling down on some of that, so I think she'll be able to kind of do, do a lot of that work and, and, and the like. As it relates to, you know, the executive assistant, that's pretty self-explanatory, that, that's going to be pretty much someone that supports Ms. Melton, myself, the policies and procedures, as well as if there's an assistant city administrator, as well as does kind of busy work, like answer the phones in the afternoon for, for the mayor's office and council and a whole host of other things. I, I think we certainly need that to, to free up some valuable time of a, a little higher, much higher skilled employees that'll be up there. Moving over to ASD, that's the big change, Administrative Services Department, and I know we had had some discussion about putting IT as a standalone, HR department as a standalone, and, and the like, and I, I could see why, but I had trouble struggling with something like human ser- uh, personnel, HR, human resources as a standalone, because we really only had two, two to three employees in there. And the work that's being done, Ms. Taylor's done some really good work, we've had some great conversations about moving forward. I appreciate the support of the additional position as an HR specialist in that, but I wanted to get more direct oversight of HR, and particularly procurement, purchasing, moving it from public works under, to a division. And I also have to divide, basically, the, the hard finance section from the administrative support division of those internal services, and hence, that's outlined in the proposal. And otherwise, I believe that it speaks for itself as an organizational chart, and I'll stand for any questions.
Questions? Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I, I, I am, I, I definitely like this chart. You know, I did have a question on, I know we talked about IT and human resources being over there, but I, I do trust your judgment that you've come in and analyzed what we've done, and you think you're comfortable with this. The planning, policy, and procedure administrator, is there anyone on board right now that would have a name attached to that, or is that a new hire?
No, that wouldn't be a new hire. My, my thought on that, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Roth, is that Ms. Fortin has great skills, and she's been doing a lot of that anyway, both before I got here, in Mr. Callahan's absence, and, and now that I'm here, I think I have a little bit more specificity and direction.
Okay.
To, to what we need to be doing in that regard, but it is not a new position.
Okay, I, so, that's, that helps me, because I didn't know, I didn't know if it was an unslot, I, I wasn't going to, I couldn't imagine who that was going to be or how that was going to be. So, so this is new. City, assistant city administrator, you may, may or may not need that, would, would deal with that in the future, that's, that's fine.
Yes, yes, I think I need a little more time to assess that.
Right. I, I, I could, I can understand that. And the only thing, the only critique I would have is, you know, for someone that wouldn't know our organization and, and look at this, they would look at it and say, mayor, council, city minister, city clerk, public information officer, wow, that's a pretty important spot, he's equal to the city clerk. It kind of looks like it's, you know, it, it appears as though it's a more, it's a bigger slot than it is, a more, you know, equal to the city clerk, you know, just under the city administrator. It's kind of just a little, it's public information officer, it's not.
I agree with you.
It's not a big, so, I don't, I don't know any, any way of improving that to where, boy, if I could get to that public information officer, I'd get the keys to the king.
I'll make it, I'll make it a smaller box.
Yeah.
Or circle.
I was thinking about that, but then you have a lot of words to stick in.
Right.
P-I-O.
No, and I, I think one of the things, again, has been talked about now for the last nine, 10 months, about how this org chart looks, and, you know, obviously, everybody had some conversation, but, but I, I think it's great. I think it's moving us in a direction and setting us up to be functional with where we're at, but also not adding too many boxes to the seats that don't create more government waste. But it's getting to where our city can manage, and, and again, I, you know, the, some of the, just the day-to-day operations, which I know all of you know, but you may not see as much, not being here eight to five, which Mr. Perry sees, this executive assistant can do a multitude of things while not adding layers of government in other areas where they don't need to be. Which, again, because sometimes when you add a layer in government, you can't, if it doesn't work, it's hard to take that layer out. And that's, I think, this whole board agrees with that, this whole council, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby?
At this time, I'd move approval of Resolution 21-69 to adopt the proposed organizational chart as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Barnaby, a second by Mr. Roth, to approve Resolution 2169. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Perry?
Last matter of business is the comprehensive risk assessment proposal and the financial, I'm sorry, is the.
City center.
Yeah, city center.
And I thought when we had talked last week, or whenever we talked about it, a week and a half ago, space study, survey, and appraisal.
That's correct, that's correct. That should have been on there.
Appraisal didn't get on here, right.
And I apologize for that.
All right, Mr. Perry?
Well, that, that is basically the concept of reviewing what the components would be for the possibility of becoming, trying to become more efficient for an urban core downtown, efficiencies at, at a city hall. And in order to look at that, I think we have to consider the possibility of what else is out there, how much it would cost, what do we have now, the value of that, because to make a decision, a, a financial decision, an efficiency decision, a benefit of the city for financial core downtown development decision, everybody could have different opinions, but I think we need that information, and I have talked with the mayor about it, and I've talked with councils, without, you know, sharing any kinds of perspectives or whatever. And I understand that there's, there's certain concerns and interest, and in order to address those, I, I, personally, I think that getting the preliminary information of an evaluation and appraisal of what this building's possible potential is and value is, is an important piece. The survey itself, as far as looking at the landmass, the footprint, and any sort of land use restrictions or easements and things like that, is obviously important, because that affects the value. And then ultimately, as the last piece, what else we have out there for other property the city might own that could be alternatively used, and.
Yes, sir, and, and one of the things, I know we've discussed this in the past at a workshop, and we kind of had moved forward under Mr. Callahan. Yes, sir. And, and one of the things, I know we've discussed this in the past at a workshop, and we kinda had moved forward under Mr. Callahan's direction. There had been some, um, talk about under a, um, with the continuing contract with Folly Bryant, doing some things at that time, which we did, and I did, sign an agreement with them, which we've paid them no money, but we've had several meetings before that with a lot of people in the city. The first, one of the first things, again, I mean, there were a lot of first things you and I did, Mr. Perry.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, was to meet with them right away, to say, all right, where we're going. And I think it's very important, as we approve this org chart today, that we give you the tools that you need to make sure we're working forward in that. So, um, again, nothing was, I thought, done inappropriately, but it was done in the process of what we have already continued down the road, so. Um, you know, and again, it's, to me, it's about, like we talked, Mr. Sanders and I had a little debate last time we met about, you know, selling city hall. It's not about selling city hall. It's about developing our urban core and finding out the options we have. And that's important to me. If that becomes one of the options, I don't vote. You guys get to make that vote, and that's important to me, though, to continue that path, as well as other things we're gonna do in the city, to, to grow our city, to not just make the urban core better, but to make every ward and neighborhood better. And I think it all is a piece to the puzzle. So that's, that's my two cents on this.
Did you say you just signed a contract with Folly Bryant?
This was a while ago, when we approved it to go forward. It was done to go a direction of the council at a workshop, yeah. So, no.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah. But nothing's been-
Can't vote in a workshop.
But it was go with the direction of it, so it was, uh, with the Folly Bryant moving forward. It was brought up, and it would be brought back before we would process it.
We cannot do stuff like that at workshops.
Well-
Mrs. Coker?
I don't remember what we discussed.
We can't do stuff like that at workshops.
I don't, well, I don't remember what, but I remember us having the discussion, and it was, I felt like we had a consensus to, yeah, let's do the study. I mean, that was what I took from it. You didn't take that from that?
Yeah, I, you know-
We can't make an assessment of the properties that we have and what we need.
To be honest, wait, so, to be, to be honest, I, I, I looked into that, and, and, um, and, and I'm just gonna take that one over uh, as, as that's the way things used to get done with the previous administrator. And it's not, it's not right, and, and I, I know our new administrator wants to do things correctly. That, you know, yeah, you can't make decisions at a, at a workshop. That's a fact.
What?
Um, you know, uh, contracts should be approved by council. That's a fact. We're, we're, I just wanna move on to the right, so here we are now. It's being discussed to do this correctly, properly, and everything. This, this is a way to do things. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to start writing off some stuff that was done previously that I, I didn't agree with. We're, I'm beyond that now.
And that's why I brought, that's why I personally brought it up, 'cause there was no intent other than moving forward to get that. And, and it wasn't an intent of saying it was never coming back here, 'cause again, Mr. Perry can ask, answer this too. I brought it up to him right away, and he brought it to me to say, let's do this. That's why we've discussed it.
But, but for the rec-
Oh, yeah.
For the record, I got the minutes. There was never a vote. There was never, there was never an okay to do that. That's just for the record.
It was, it was, it was a situation that we were fluent going, and it-
But, so, so, but we're, we're moving on now. This is, this is fine. I, I-
I wanna see exactly what happened on that, and, um, seriously, immediately. And, um, I'm, I'm gonna make a statement here. This is not proper.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Sanders, I can't tell you anything more than, I was up in St. Petersburg Beach or Indianapolis, Indiana. Yeah, I, I-
I understand.
I'm, I'm not the right person to talk to about that, and I won't be held. But what I can tell you is that the mayor and I did have a conversation, and when we realized, uh, we think that there was, you know, a basis to proceed accordingly. And we wanted to make sure that, that it was addressed, and, and we're trying to do that, I think, today. And that's the best I, I can really do as the administrator.
I, I understand, but I'm asking for your, your, your information on this, to follow up on it, because that, we can't, I cannot allow this to happen. And, you know, that's, that's a conversation with selling city hall. It ain't about selling city hall. It's about selling city hall for a, a reasonable price. And if somebody's out there not trying to get it, I, I've hea- heard rumors out in the community, two million dollars. I'll buy it for two million dollars.
Well, I think that's the purpose of why we're proceeding with an appraisal, is to do that.
Well, how about a, how about a, a, a new construction cost? Uh, this is a hundred thousand dollar building, and at two million dollars, that's twenty dollars square foot. You can't buy it. You can't do that.
Mr. Mayor and Councilor Sanders, I can't engage in that at this point, because I don't even know. I mean, we're going way far in advance of what would, look, we'd, we'd be debating, well beyond my pay grade as the city administrator, I assure you. But when you say you'd like my information, 'cause that's how it started, my information is the same information that everybody has. The minutes, basically. And whether they're ambiguous, or, or, or authoritative, or tacit, I, I guess those characterizations can often be made by other people, other than me. Um, I can tell you that, that when it came up, I, I thought the mayor did the right thing, that, that he said, what do you think? I said, let's bring it up, and, and we did that, and, and, and-
There was no malintent here. It was something that was going through the process and got put.
And I understand your concern, you know, you know, I wasn't here before, and, and I can appreciate the council would say, well, I know it looks like one thing, but I'm concerned that it's something else.
Well, perception is, is, is reality in, in politics.
Well, okay, the perception was, we had that discussion, and I, I mean, I'd like to hear the merits of doing the space study, not, I mean, maybe there should've been a vote, that part, I, I don't even remember if there was a formal vote. But I remember us having a discussion, and I think it's appropriate for us to have a space study, so we know where we're at, what are our needs. I mean, I remember this conversation happening around the whole org chart. My mind was all, so how do we even know what we need, if we don't do a study?
And how would we do a study?
Well, our, our mayor is doing a study.
We're doing it, so.
And that's what I thought the whole discussion was about.
So, Mr. Perry, do you think we just need a motion to go forward with this? And, uh, 'cause again, I've brought it up a couple of times at meetings, that we want to do the right thing. We're not trying to, to hide anything, and we're trying to make it go forward. So, yes, Mr. Roth?
I would recommend we go ahead and make a motion to move forward. Are we, are we going with Folly Bryant?
I believe that's the proposal we have, and, and just for council's understanding, when it became, uh, the potential for an issue, I told Folly Bryant, I said, why don't you guys just hold off?
Okay.
'Cause we do wanna, you know, put a timeout, freeze it, and take it to council. And that, and that's where it's been. I mean, I don't think we've done anything-
There's no monies exchanged.
No, it's never been, you know, there's, nothing's been billed, nothing's been paid, and I haven't had any dealings with them, um, other than the initial conversation, right?
Something different.
Yeah, that's different.
So, so what is the proposal?
I think it was nineteen thereabouts, was their proposal.
Nineteen thousand?
Nineteen thousand, involves a series of, of meetings. I don't have it with me. And, uh, you know, obviously, reaching out to the various departments of the city and assess, you know, assessing what the space needs are, both now and in the future, and, and how that can be accommodated, I guess, uh, you know, as relates to that aspect. And of course, there's the appraisal that, that, that isn't on here. And if there is official action, I think that I should get some direction about whether you want me to move forward with, with that or not.
Appraisal of what?
I think the value of this land.
Of, of, of city hall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And you might wanna separate them. That, that's my point. Right, take them one at a time. Yeah.
So, Ms. Barnaby?
This is first time I'm hearing some of this stuff.
Ms. Barnaby?
I seem, I seem to remember that when we were discussing the org chart, and we were discussing, there were several different items that we talked about at that, at that workshop. We talked about, um, an appraisal of the building. We talked about, of the appraisal of the land versus the appraisal of the building. We talked about, and I'm trying to remember, there were some other things that Folly Bryant had previously been contracted to do. And I, if I'm remembering correctly, I think the thought was that it was going to be kind of added onto that scope of work. And I'm trying to remember exactly what it was, but I, I mean, if we've, if we've brought it forward, and you, we need to, and I agree, because we've got, we've got some people working on top of each other. We've got other areas that are not being used efficiently. We need to figure out what, what we need, what can be done, what's the best way to do it, and how do we wanna do it? And I don't think that all of us collectively up here can come up with that information on our own. So I would be in favor of having the space study that incorporates the entire, the entirety of, you know, again, city hall, public works, wherever we have people working. You know, you have said you wanna have the procurement department moved in here, and we need to figure out where we're gonna put them, if we do that. Um, and I agree with that, because I think it's important to have that function right up here where the checks are being cut and where things are coming through, so.
Mrs. Coachman?
At the risk of redundancy, I, I won't, you've pretty much, uh, councilwoman, expressed what I was thinking, but one thing we know for sure, we cannot go back in, in terms of how we got here. But we can move forward, if that's the agreement of the council.
All right, so, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, so, um, I know when I came in here in two thousand and six, this was something that came up, it's just for discussion. And I probably looked at it every three or four years, 'cause it's always, it's always been a topic of discussion, and what, and the assessments. So we've never, we've never done this. We've never, we've never come in and had a space study needed, what we would need. We, we've done, we've done guestimates. Uh, we've never had an appraisal. We don't, we didn't know what it was there. We, we've just done guestimates. So I, I think moving forward on this, um, is, is the right thing to do, but I, I could tell you, every time we did a guestimate, it came up about the same way. That we, we figured out what we would need is, you know, twenty million for PD, twenty, twenty-five million for PD, fifteen, ten, or fifteen for city hall, and we could probably only get about eight for the building. So it's, it's always never been, the, the formula's never been there to, to be cost-effective, revenue-neutral, to move sideways. It's just always been, the city would take a, a, you know, twenty million dollar hit to, to move. So if we, if we find that out, then we know that, but that's what, it's always, it's always been that way. And my guess is, we'll still find that, because this, this building will not have any value. Its only value is what it's being used for right now. You know, with a, with a, uh, an auditorium that would, you know, two mayors ago wanted to save the auditorium. And, and we were not able to effectively utilize the auditorium at, at a cost-revenue basis. It would be, it would be, you know, we got from losing half a million dollars years a year, down to a quarter million dollars a year, and that was as good as it got, so we shut it down. So that being said, moving forward, let's just go ahead and do this, and then everyone will know where we are, you know, what it's gonna cost us to actually move this, 'cause I know that there are outside forces that, that want us to vacate this building and, uh, you know, and let them sell it. And, uh, you know, I have to be a steward of the, of the, the city's, uh, you know, finances, that there was, you know, this, this property has value. We're using it right now. Thank you very much. But I do see, if we can move it, if we can figure out a way of, of getting a new building, or going somewhere else and putting us on the market, that would be great. I would say to those people who are, you know, concerned about getting their hands on our property so that we could take a tax loss, or a revenue loss, or a, or a reserve loss, um, I, I don't know why anyone doesn't look at the old city hall site, which has been vacant for twenty-some years. That's prime downtown real estate, and I never hear anyone talking about, it's scraped land. It's greenfield development. I never hear anyone talking about wanting to put, there was once, before I got in here, I, I came down and gave my blessing on a, a ten-story structure down there, with, with, you, you were the one voting for it. And, uh, you know, with mixed use and parking and all that stuff, and it never, it never happened. So instead of people focusing on this property, which we're using, how about they look at that property, it's owned by a government right now, and nobody's using it. As, no, the bums are using it.
Mr. Roth, that has, um, in discussions and with a lot of people, there's three huge sites in this city. This one, the library, which is another factor property, and the old hit city hall site. And if the county could sell the old city hall site for the appraised value, or a little more, they would. But there is a kicker on it, maybe Mr. Rudisell knows more about it, for the Army Corps of Engineers, I think it is.
No, it's Swift Mud.
Swift Mud.
And it's, it's several million dollars.
It's several million dollars, so they gotta come, yeah, they gotta come up with that.
But I've heard these people, I've heard these same people tell me, I should be willing to eat fifteen or twenty million for the sake of economic development. I, I've had conversations, oh, well, but you have to factor in the economic development factor. No, I, my job is, well, I know, but it's like, so no one wants the county to eat their, uh, they, they, they've got into a bad real estate move. You know, previous, uh, uh, previous, previous commissioners made a bad real estate move, and they gotta eat that. But no one's expecting them to eat any count, any amounts of money for a property they're not using. But I have people petitioning me to, to be willing to eat a ten million dollar loss on a property I'm using.
But I don't think anybody's commissioning it until we have the information-
I'm just getting this off my chest. I'm just getting this off my chest.
And we've had this discussion a lot, so, Ms. Barnaby?
Can we do that at lunch? Yes, Mr. Mayor, at this point in time, because we've gone far afield, um, I think that, and I'm not exactly sure how to wordsmith this motion, that, um, we instruct staff to look into, uh, a space study, survey, and appraisal of city hall, and Mr. Kelly, or I'm sorry, Mr. Perry, why do I wanna keep calling you Mr. Kelly? Mr. Perry, um, for an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars?
I don't know what the appraisal and survey would be.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Barnaby, uh, the nineteen thousand I referenced before was for the space study. I think it was defined to that. Yep, and I have no idea.
Well, you're asking me to vote for a pig and a poke at this point.
And, and you could characterize it accurately that way. Uh-huh.
Where, where did nineteen thousand come from?
That, that was the proposal that-
Folly Bryant proposal.
They proposed something without the council hearing it.
I don't know what happened. I saw her proposal, yep.
The proposal that they-
Then I, I, I make a motion that we turn this down, and look for other people to do a space study, if we really think we need to do it. Anybody second that?
Well, Mrs. Barnaby has the floor now.
No, she didn't have it. She didn't have the motion.
Yes, I certainly did.
You had a motion? I didn't hear. She said you didn't know how to word it.
I was trying to word it, before I was interrupted, but, um-
Ms. Barnaby, please.
I think you had it.
I, I, well, I, I was going to try to, if, if I vote for something, I wanna know what the cost implications are going to be. If, if you're saying that's just for the space study, that would not include the appraisal, um, would it be better if, if we, we, rather than a motion, that we instruct staff and the mayor's office to look into this and bring us two or three proposals for having this done?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I, I would probably recommend a motion that includes, you know, trying to address these three things that, that approve the advancing with the space study, um, that we already have an idea, that that's nineteen thousand dollars, and it's the company that's using, doing those things, and that staff further, uh, obtain bids and proposals for approval by council, so it's clear, I'm not authorized to do it, but for approval by council of the, of the survey and appraisal. And, and once we get those proposals, we'll have a pretty be- much better idea how much they cost, so you're not buying a pig and a poke. You're buying, you're buying one thing that's known, and, and two, you're, you're authorizing me to go try to get a price for the other two.
Right.
All right, well, then, my motion is that we go forward with the space study with the information that we have, but also instruct staff to bring proposals back for a survey and appraisal. And that's my motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
No.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carries four to one. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Nothing further from the administration, sir.
Okay, and we're gonna have to take a five-minute recess for M E T V to get some batteries hooked up. So we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you. All the meeting back to order?
Exactly, exactly.
We're at council reports. Mr. Roth, you're up.
Oh, uh, nothing to report, sir.
All right, um, Mrs. Coachman?
Other than Ward five being alive?
Yep.
Probably the same things that everyone else has been getting this, uh, past few weeks. You know, concern about our solid waste being picked up, but other than that, nothing else to report.
All right, Mr. Sanders? All right, Mr. Sanders?
Well, I don't have anything to report, other than I had eye surgery on the right eye, so I'm truly a pirate to this, not working yet. But I can barely see you if I do like that. You know, I went in there, and I don't think anybody's ever had a colonoscopy, you go in this big room where everybody's in there, and I won't get too gory with details or anything. Anyway, well, it's good. And I'm sitting there, there's three or four beds on this side, three or four beds this side, you got IVs in, everybody's, you know, what's your name, how old are you, and what's your last rites, and you got to sign all those 55 documents in case they pull your eyeball out and can't get it back. And so, I saw across the way a lady went out on the gurney into where I'm going to go, to the operation room, and so, the gurney came back, nobody was on it. And so, I'm still awake then, and the second gurney went out with somebody on it, went in there, gurney came back, nobody's on it. And I said, whoa, wait a minute, I got to talk to somebody. I said, this ain't looking good, and I'm up next, and I'm not going in that room because I don't know what you're doing, those people.
Agent Orange.
The doctor thought that was funny, he says, they go out the other way. I said, you should have told me, because I was about to go out that way.
We went there twice that day.
Oh, yeah? I was really worried. These guys aren't coming back.
Mrs. Coker?
Okay, just very quickly, first off, we didn't all make it till the end of the game, but I'm sure, I want to congratulate the Brayden Marauders. Did you make it to the whole way?
No, no, but I was going to say.
I want to congratulate the Brayden Marauders. They had a walk-off win, four to three, first game of the championship, so, wanted to congratulate them, wanted to congratulate the mayor for getting it across the plate, and congratulate Ms. Mary Ann, she sang beautifully in the seventh. But also, just a couple of things. I, as far as, I don't know where we talk about this, but like I mentioned earlier, is I've had issues in my ward with some people that are not mowing their lawn, and in the case of one property, they have over $70,000 in fines, and they just won't, and there's been a threatening as to if we went and we mowed it, you know, we'd have to have law enforcement there just to keep everybody safe. So, I don't know, we would have to determine, how far are we willing to go on this?
Is that property homesteaded?
Yes, it is. So, you can't foreclose on it. But at what point does it become an issue? Because you've got property rights, which, you know, we all want that, but then, what about the rights of the neighbors?
Right, but we have a process for that now to foreclose on that property, right?
If it's homesteaded, you can't.
Yeah, I'm not so sure.
Put a lien on it.
Put a lien on it, you can't, you can't.
He's got over $70,000 in things.
That's how you can do it.
No, we can't foreclose on the homestead property, but what we have had discussions with code enforcement about is the potential for bringing, you know, when we have really extreme cases like that, I think there is a potential to bring suit for some kind of injunctive relief on a nuisance situation, so, and that was something that, you know, in talking to Volker, he indicated that the city has not been willing to go down that road in the past, but maybe, might be willing to in some of these scenarios.
I know, but we need to discuss this. We're not willing to go down the road for people picking up the trash, throwing out the trash, parking cars in the yard, and now they can just let their houses go to heck, and we all, although other people, oh, we're a friendly city, but we're not friendly to the people that's behaving, we're friendly to the people that doesn't want to do things right, and I'm on the side of, I think, the majority that wants people to mow their yard, take their cars out of the yard, put out their trash, you know.
Well, I had the discussion with Volker, and he said he felt like he needed direction from council. I thought maybe we would talk about it at a workshop or something, but.
I think that would be a workshop.
Alright, perfect, so.
Quickly, on that note, because it's the same type of discussion, I've been talking to the city administrator on how to get ahead of the trash. We've got eight different reasons why this became a perfect storm, and one of them, one of them is property owners, not homeowners, who have rental properties, who are acting in a not-great manner, and that's going to, we're going to need some type of leverage to come down on them for the cost of cleaning up their stuff. And it can't go back to, you can't blame a tenant for a property owner hauling crap over from a property he owns in the county and dumping it on there, so it's got to, it's going to have to go back to some type of stiff legal maneuver to get back on a for-profit property owner. So, we're going to need some language. We're going to be in need of this.
I think it's a big discussion, because, yes, we can go over and mow this individual's lawn, but what if, I mean, obviously, he's not willing to follow the rules, and what if we start talking about someone's, you know, law enforcement safety, and, you know, how far do we want to push? And that's the discussion. I don't know. Is it worth someone's safety to mow their lawn, and, you know?
But we've been doing nothing.
I know, I know, and by not doing nothing, you're doing, you know, you're doing something, so, I agree. I just wanted to throw it out there that I would like to have that discussion and see if we can come up with some solutions.
Yes, seriously.
To that point, I think pretty much a lot of jurisdictions have those one or two cases that evade everybody for different reasons, and what Mr. Rudisell was speaking about as far as bringing independent, you know, civil action against that landowner, we had to do it in a couple of cases. It was years and years of, you know, of attempted enforcement, financial penalties, pigs on the property, abandoned vehicles, commercial refuge, everything in between, and maybe some mental health as well of this individual. And we basically had to bring it to civil court, and with that injunctive request came an order to show cause if it wasn't carried out to maintain the property. And unfortunately, the sheriff has to go out there and bring the person in before the court and say, this needs to stop, or the sheriff's going to have to put you in for the contempt order of the order to show cause that I ask you to maintain your property. And, you know, I've seen people go to jail, literally, for 10 days and make a half-baked effort to clean it up, and then still try to play a game. And the judge have to put them back in for 20 days the second time.
Maybe it's a good divorce court, they're pretty easy about taking your property.
Right, right, yeah. But, I mean, those are, there are available remedies, but your point gets back to, well, how far do you want to go with them? And sometimes you got to, unfortunately, you got to be willing to go the distance.
Well, but I also think that, you know, again, I've, we talked about this right when I got on the council eight-plus years ago about, because we're coming right out of the recession where people weren't doing a lot of mowing, and we were mowing yards and all of that, and, because the bank, but there was nobody there. They were in foreclosure, so there's a little difference there. But the thing is, is I can think of half a dozen right now that we've got complaints on, that if we're going to do one, we got to do all of them, and that's only the ones I know about. So, it's, there's a slippery slope, but I don't disagree, there's got to be something discussed, because, you know, and then if you're doing it in your ward, why aren't you doing it in Patrick, Mary Ann, Bill, or?
There's a property I inherited from Michelle Weaver, where there's literally, in the middle of a residential neighborhood right over by Ballard School, there's literally two tractor-trailer boxes sitting on there. I mean, we've had them clean that property up six times, and he's, we got front-end loaders, back-end loaders, I mean, it's just, it's completely, I mean, it's what you described, it's a disaster, and it's not fair to the neighborhood.
Not fair to the neighborhood, but it is going to cost, we've got to be prepared to pay the attorney's fees.
This been going on for 15 years.
All right, well, that's.
Workshop.
Start making some movement on it.
Yep, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want, two items I want to bring up. One is, it seems now almost every day, Riverview Boulevard from 21st to 26 at certain points in time is impassable because of the water coming through the storm sewers. I know that we have a project that we've trying to find money for, we were waiting on the ARPA money, I just want to put that in front of you again. And it's not just because of the residents there. I see our city vehicles having to drive through that brackish water, and it's salt water, and it's going to rust cars out, it's going to rust trucks out, it's going to rust garbage trucks out, that sort of thing, so, I'm not.
It's in the CIP permit.
Okay. Okay, I'm not forgetting it, that's all I'm saying. Also.
That's in town?
Well, there'll be another one for the rest of Riverview, Riverside, that's the next project after that one.
When's that? When is that?
It would be one that we could put in ARPA money for because it's not in our CIP, so.
But that's in CIP?
That was one that we planned into the CIP, and the rest of Riverside is one that we would seek funding for through ARPA. I'm preparing my list of projects for Mr. Perry right now that we, in follow-up with our initial kickoff meeting with Ernst &amp; Young.
Thank you.
The other thing that I had was, as I'm sure many of you are aware, at the intersection of 7th Avenue West and 33rd Street West this week, there was a fatal accident where one of the postal workers in his mail truck was hit, and he did not survive that accident. I have asked the police department and our traffic committee to look at that intersection. I'm still getting emails from people about it, so I'm wondering, Mr. McCollum, if we could do something to make that stop sign, the ones that are there, a little more visible, if it's painting the white stop bars? 7th Avenue West and 33rd Street West.
You got some psychedelic stop signs. Remember the one you put in my neighborhood?
Well, we have the stop signs, the actual post itself is a reflective one as well.
I'm talking about that one that was electronic, that was going off with strobe lights? That's pretty hard to miss.
I'm sure the homeowners will love that.
Anyway, I'm just asking, while we're waiting on the traffic committee to look at that, if there's a simple fix that we can do right now to make sure that those stop signs that are currently there are more visible? If we could do that, I would appreciate it very much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, yes. Obviously, marauders, you know, good, everybody that was able to come out last night, thank you, and thank you to the marauders and the pirates for having us. And again, we all left when it was 1 to 0 because they went into a rain delay, we were losing, and a walk-off 4 to 3. So, we're proud of our marauders, and maybe we'll get a championship, just got to win two more. But also, and then again, I was going to bring up, obviously, our mailmen, male women are very important to us in our communities, and that's a tragedy to lose someone that way. So, our condolences to the postal service as well as the family of the individual. And then, just want to confirm with everybody, obviously, our October 27th meeting is going to be moved till November 3rd, so that's still out there if anybody needs to know it. But I would also, we'll get with Mr. Perry, and we'll get the notice out, but for October 6th, to have a workshop and get some of the items on, if you have anything specific, please send Ms. Melton, and we'll make sure and get on that agenda, and if we need to be here all day, we can be here all day for a workshop if we need to be. Go from there, I don't see any happy faces, but do what we got to do. All right, so, moving on to department heads, any specific, if you have something, come forward, if you don't.
If you don't, don't.
I included it in my weekly report, but I also just want to reiterate to you all that, as it relates to yard waste collection, we are mobilizing the entire department, not just solid waste, over this coming weekend, and we're hoping to have it be something that we might have to be doing for a couple of weekends into the future. But to bring out not just solid waste trucks, but we're bringing out pickup trucks with trailers behind it so that we can utilize drop-off points to the various containers that we have placed throughout the city. We are getting some traction with people utilizing those. I myself personally filled one of them quite a bit this morning as I was coming to work and picked up a bunch of stuff that was easy enough for me to pick up and put into it, but hopefully, we'll be able to put a major dent in things and get ourselves caught up over the weekend, and I apologize for all the phone calls you get.
No problem. Jim, I do have one question for you. I've seen on the news the other night, last night or night before, that where there's some cities that are even having problems getting the regular trash.
It's a hit or miss.
We're pretty good at that, we have not missed the regular trash.
I don't want to jinx it and say we haven't had any problem with it.
But I'm saying, it's not, it's the yard waste that.
Yeah, and recycle.
And is recycle a little bit.
Well, the problem again with yard waste is, it's the hardest of them to pick up, because it may be a can, it may be a bag, but it may be a pile. And depending upon the pile, the pile can be a 15-minute pickup, or it could be a 45-minute pickup, depending upon how big it is. And when you don't know how many of them are out there, you know, it's easy enough to drive down the street and know that you're going to have a blue can or a green can at every house. You don't know how many piles you're going to find as you drive through the streets. So, that's the biggest kicker associated with that. The only other thing I was going to mention that, I won't be at the council meeting on the 13th or 12th of October, I'll be on vacation that week. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Robin?
We've talked about sending out sort of proactive postcards for code enforcement matters to neighborhoods, excuse me, before we do a sweep, so, we're going to start that with Village of the Arts, where we prepared a postcard that informs them of certain issues to kind of get cleaned up and get ready for season. So, that, you may hear about it, but that'll go out in the next week or so, and then we'll follow that up with code enforcement action. So, hopefully, a lot of people clean up, and we won't have to cite a lot of people. Also, I don't know if the chief is going to mention it, but the micro-mobility study committee completed their recommendation, and so, we were going to bring that to you on a workshop, and so, that'll be on your October 6th.
All right, quick question, you said the postcard.
Yeah.
Is there a way also, I know in the water bill, it doesn't, other than the printing of the material?
Yeah.
Would you do it double? I mean, is that something?
We could do that as well. I know a lot of people do their billing electronically, and they may not get that. One of the reasons we want to send in a postcard, you don't have to open an envelope.
I liked the postcard too, but I didn't know if there was a way to say, we tried both ways, and also, social media, we can hit that on Facebook too, now that we're going to have that.
Okay.
All right, perfect, thank you. Anyone else? In the workshop, we'll have that, so, and I recognize, school board member Golden's in the audience watching, so, thank you for being here, former city councilperson. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we'll be adjourned.